I wish I could whistle like my mom.
Turn around and make the noise to pretend that you...
Yes. Okay, we're gonna get started? They're not listening.
Do you want me to try it?
Huh?
Here, can you help?
That's all right.
I was just gonna chuck it out.
Okay, we're gonna reconvene. Since we moved a couple things on the agenda, I don't have like a bunch of speaker cards for these other items, but Commissioner Loeb asked, and he has an item J8 that's related to this item, and it's just one person, one speaker, and it's an actual item. So I'm gonna move, since it's related to this, that ahead because we have, I think we're up to 15 cards, and then we're gonna hear item F1, and then we'll go J1. It sounds like a lot, but trust me, it won't take any time at all, but I think it's most appropriate. Commissioner Loeb, item J8.
Sure. Essentially, as I spoke about earlier, I think it's important to get a broad and diverse group of opinions with respect to the issues pertaining to the lagoon, and quite frankly, all of the other issues that are controversial at this level. To that end, I've had folks that have been kind enough to volunteer at my office, giving up their own free time to help me get a better grasp in terms of what different options are available to us. John Wyler, who we heard from before, who's sitting in the second to the front row over here, is a retired nuclear engineer. So quite frankly, you know, he has a different basis of giving me advice as compared to some of the other folks. I have another individual, Frank Goland, who's a fluid dynamics, or has been a fluid dynamics engineer at NASA, who has been quite essential in terms of giving you background on water chemistry and on nutrient monitoring systems. John, and Frank, and I, and some of my staff at the office, have begun touring some of the wastewater treatment plants. We've been looking at whether adding tertiary treatment to make them AWT compliant is a good, a bad, or a questionable use of the funds that are available. It's something that I anticipate will come up as a recurring theme until we eventually do have a vote, which is obviously gonna depend on the motion that's made, based on those visits and based on the research that's being done. We've also invited folks to come out to the office to educate us on this, some of whom have published on the topic, some of whom have not published on the topic. Dr. Peter Burrell, who I believe, as I recall from another commission meeting, has spoken with Mr. Tabaya, and then maybe also our chair. He's come out on multiple occasions, I've spoken with him. He has a different take. Everyone, I believe, has something of a unique position with respect to the lagoon. It's rare to have everyone, or a large group of individuals, agree to an absolute certainty as to each and every aspect of how we're going to address the lagoon successfully. I think it's kind of like when you're dealing with an elected official, where if you give that individual long enough, you will never agree with any elected official 100% of the time. If you agree with them 70 or 80% of the time, that's probably pretty good. But I think it's important for us to basically expose ourselves to these different points of view, which we're free to agree with, disagree with, to adopt in whole or in part when we end up having different proposals and motions that are made. But I've asked to have some individuals come out and address the commission, so that, as opposed to us having any chance of violating sunshine by my sending them outside the context of a meeting, we can do it all on the record where there's no question as to the legality of it. And I'm surprised, because I thought we'd have a couple different cards on this, but if we have one at this point, again, with everyone waiting here to move on with the meeting, I'm not gonna take up any more of your time at this stage. I'd ask that we move on to the public comment on it.
Okay, I have Mr. John Wyler. I'll double-check my pile and make sure there's nobody else.
Good evening again, Commissioners. John Wyler, 4240 South Tropical Trail, Merritt Island. I live on the Banana River. I've lived on the river for over 30 years, so the lagoon is very important to me and my neighbors. I'll say this on the comment. I've spent many hours in the last six months, and I say six months, because I started really going into the details of this during the campaign for the district elections, and reviewing the IRL cleanup plan. And I've tried to, you know, form an educated evaluation of where we're expending the allocated funds, and whether they appear to have some short or long-term, or no impact on the Indian River Lagoon cleanup. And this means removing the biggest contributors to nutrient loading. That is obviously what is causing our algae blooms and so forth, after talking to many of the biologically-oriented scientists. I've concluded many of the items currently underway are shortsighted, fit the category of feel-good, and are just efforts to spend the money, because we had the money, which is not a good way of doing it. Among these are the PR marketing plans, which I spoke to earlier today, excessive and expensive muck removal in areas of the lagoon which are not significantly contributing to algae blooms, spending over 50% of the funds for muck removal, to me, is a misuse of the funds after looking at all the other things that are in there. The focus should be on expenditures to get the most bang for the buck sooner than later. In that regard, my recommendation, after looking at all the data that was available to me in the plan, is that we should focus, that the county commission should focus on the major wastewater, parentheses sewage, treatment plants, and equally important, their connecting wastewater networks of sewer transport pipelines. Upgrade and increase the handling capacity of the wastewater system at these treatment plants. Move forward on the capital improvement plans. Don't wait two, three, or five years out to complete these efforts. Repair and upgrade the existing main sewer lines that are leaking and require replacement. Stall additional new sewer lines that allow homes with septic systems near the lagoon to connect to central sewer processing. Promote removing the berm for the 528 and 520 highways across the Banana River, and replace that with elevated roadways, which will allow about a 10% increase in flow in the Banana River, according to the Corps of Engineers in their study. Limit removal of muck with the exception of entrances to streams emptying into the lagoon and certain areas of these streams. And implement a system of continuous monitoring, which will serve as an indicator of where the problem areas are, and show progress when projects are implemented, which is sort of lacking right now, I think. Questions?
Go ahead.
I do wanna share with folks here something that I've already shared with Mr. Wyler, outside the context of this meeting. At the IRL NEP, I've been to every IRL NEP meeting since I was put on the IRL NEP, and at the immediate pass meeting that we had, which was roughly a week or so ago, up in New Smyrna Beach, an item was proposed by Duane DeFreeze for vote. Basically, it was a resolution that, in a nutshell, was encouraging FDOT to consider some modeling that was done by FIT, at least in part, with respect to the 528 causeway over the lagoon. I can tell you, there was some pushback, unexpected in my mind, pushback, as to whether or not that should be voted on at that time. Dr. DeFreeze pointed out, essentially, and again, I'm paraphrasing here, that if we wait too long to address that concern, FDOT may arrive at a stage where it's prohibitively difficult to go and backtrack to make that recommendation to FDOT. And from what I understood, based on the commentary at the IRL NEP, was that FDOT was less than receptive when we approached them at the Brevard County level, as individuals here, or as scientists here. And the hope was that by passing that through the IRL NEP, that we would essentially put DEP, Florida DEP, in a position to apply pressure to FDOT, so that they would consider those suggestions a little bit more seriously at the state level, as opposed to us pushing it at the county level. I did, as I mentioned, get some pushback with respect to having that item addressed. I did express to the folks that are on the IRL NEP that it's absolutely mission-critical for us here in Brevard, that that be considered, and that DOT give that as much consideration as we're possibly able to get them to give it. I mentioned that from my office, not just as a, from a county standpoint, but from a District 2 standpoint, I look at the 528 causeway, and that from my house, I believe I mentioned to them, I may or may not have during the meeting, that I look at the 520 causeway if I step out on my dock, but in any event, it's certainly in my district as well. And the problem is, in terms of increasing flow, and I don't think there's been any second opinion with this, I think that everyone that I've spoken with in the scientific community, without exception, is in agreement, that how they plan that 528 expansion is potentially gonna lock us into a certain situation with respect to flow, not necessarily for one or two years to come, but for decades to come, because when that's put in place, it's not gonna get torn out any time in the near future. And in order to improve the situation with respect to flow, anything that we do, to a degree, with respect to the causeway at 520, is gonna be rendered largely moot if we don't address 528 as well. So in order to improve the flow, and some numbers were floated around, I think the number with the most consensus was 10%. To increase the flow by a roughly 10% in that stretch of the lagoon, which is essentially the District 2 stretch, we would have to address both 528 and 520 in a way that factored in flow when the construction recommendations, and eventually when the contracts are put out to bid. So it's something that, you know, I'm certainly happy to continue fighting at the IRL NEP level for, but I think it's important that we have something of a unified front here in Brevard. And eventually, that did pass unanimously, including by the individual that was most concerned with putting that particular item off. But I think we need to have a unified front here, in at least so far as the non-controversial items go, because I think we can all agree that flow is important. Whether or not that's the top priority, the second priority, the fifth priority, I think that's certainly debatable. Whether demucking is the top priority, or the fifth priority, I think that's debatable. Whether, you know, where we put fertilizer education, it's something I don't think anyone would say is a bad thing, but where it goes in the priority list, I think, is debatable. And my, again, my whole purpose, not to be repetitious, is to expose folks to all of the information that I possibly can that's relevant to the issue, so that when it's put up for a vote, when an item pertaining to the lagoon comes up, it's not that we're shooting from the hip and doing things based on, oh gee, well, we have, you know, one scientist that showed up here, that's got a doctorate, that's been involved with it historically, and he or she may have told us X. I think it's important that we really do our own work, not to the exclusion of those beliefs and those statements made by scientists and by experts, but factoring in multiple scientists' and experts' opinions. So that's essentially what I'm up to today. I believe that Jim Glass, I don't know if he's still here, but I know that, is he? Did you wanna speak as well? Because I thought you were going to submit a card for this.
Well, yeah, I wanted to talk, but I can talk later.
Okay, okay, if you'd like, then I can, sir.
I comment, if I may, on the flow study. Yeah, and it's very important to know, you know, I just said, I glossed over, is the Corps of Engineers study. It was an extensive study, and it was done by the Vicksburg Modeling Lab, which is considered to be the premier modeling lab for waterways in the world. So with that study coming out of the Corps of Engineers' Vicksburg Modeling Lab, it has a lot of credibility with me as an engineer. It says, "That's a pretty good study," compared to some of the other ones, which, like, some stuff been pulled out of the sky on. That one, I have a lot of trust in, in the report.
No, I appreciate it. I appreciate it. No, and again, this is just a discussion item. There's no motion that I'm putting before the commission at this point in time. But I appreciate, Mr. Glass, if you've not had a chance to submit a comment card, if you would do so, I think, at least based on our prior conversation, you have some input that I'd like to hear again.
Okay, we can talk now.
If you wanna talk at the other item, that's fine. I'm not gonna dictate how you do it, but thank you. That's all I have on this item.
Okay, with your desire to hear item F1 now?
Yeah, if you'd like to do it that way, let's do that.
Okay, that was an item that was on consent, just for commission's sake. I don't know if staff wants to talk on that item that was pulled.
Item F1 is a request for time extensions on three contracts with the City of Melbourne for projects that are part of, that were adopted as part of a previous Save Our Indian River Lagoon Plan update. One of the projects is a septic-to-sewer project, two are stormwater projects. Each of the three has suffered delays for different reasons, and so the city has requested time extension, no-cost time extensions to those contracts.
Commissioner Loeb?
And I appreciate the work that you've done on this, and that your department's done on this. I generally wouldn't have any consternation moving to approve and voting to approve something like this. My concern is that, what I've noticed, and I don't know how many times it takes to make a trend, is that we've had multiple extension requests, and they've disproportionately been, at least in the time I've been on the commission, from the City of Melbourne. And I appreciate your having copied me on the email that you'd sent out to the City of Melbourne, prior to this meeting, when we had a briefing. And unfortunately, just logistically, the briefings are held oftentimes in close proximity time-wise to the actual commission meetings. So in all fairness to the city, I don't know that the request was necessarily the most timely, but I did ask the Natural Resources Department to request that Mayor Meehan come here to address this, or in the alternative, that she send one of the city council men or councilwomen to address this. And my concern, and I don't wanna to put any City of Melbourne staff in a bad spot, you seem like a very pleasant person back there, and I'm not gonna give you a hard time, but I think it's important to, for us to get a grasp on exactly why we're seeing these recurring extension requests from the City of Melbourne. It's something where, if there's an extenuating circumstance, I can understand that, and that's fine. I'm not looking to penalize anyone, but to the point where it's starting to stand out to me as a pattern, and again, I'm not trying to put you in a bad spot, because, you know, this is not your doing by any means, but it's causing me concern, and I'd like to make sure that the city understands that if it has the ability to keep these things moving on a timely, in a timely fashion, that it'd do everything reasonable to accomplish that, because for this to come up as a repeated item again and again, I think it's unnecessary when the other cities are certainly able to, by and large, resolve the sorrel fund issues in a timely fashion, not requiring us to give them extension after extension.
Hi. Name an address, please.
Sure. My name is Dani Straub. I work for the City of Melbourne Engineering Department, and our address is 900 East Strawbridge, Melbourne, Florida.
Thanks.
The three projects that we've asked for extensions for were first-year projects, and while we'll admit, the City of Melbourne probably bit off a little more than it can chew the first year. We went from having two to three major construction projects, based out of our stormwater utility fund project, to six to eight, using our sorrel funds. And so we're having a little bit of management problems, and we're looking at hiring additional staff. But that's having to come out of our general fund budget and our stormwater utility budget, because we don't use any sorrel dollars for funding of staff. The three projects listed, the Hoag Septica Sewer Project, we had a homeowner that we thought we could tie into. We started our permitting process with DEP in Virginia, and her counterparts in the utility department in City of Melbourne headed off to DEP land in Orlando to determine how we could get these projects permitted, because we were having issues the same time they were. We've come to a conclusion on a way to make, get these projects permitted, and we actually should have construction started within the next 30 days on this project. Between when we asked for our extension and what has occurred in the last week or two, we've moved the project along. So it's just one of those things. It happens, it moves forward. So we could reduce our extension, our extension purpose was actually to help bring in more property owners, so that we could spend more dollars to help them offset their cost for their septic. The Cliff Creek Project, we encountered a piece of property that we thought we owned, and then once we did our title work on our survey, we did not, and so we're working at acquiring an easement for that one. And then with the Thrush Drive Project, the basins are extremely large that we're looking at, their baffle box projects. We're looking at 400 to 600-acre basins, and we can't go out and send a survey crew to go survey those. Those are two-year processes. So we're monitoring those pipes to have rainfall data collected, so we can know that we can size those basins appropriately on those baffle boxes, so that we don't cause flooding upstream, because that's the last thing we wanna do. Don't wanna cause one problem by fixing something else. So it didn't rain a lot, and so we're at our six-month collection of data, and our consultant's asking for another month, so he can hopefully get another rainfall data, but I can't pick how big the box is until I know how much rainfall it's gotta treat. So unfortunately, it's just on the nature of multiple projects moving on, and how we're trying to make them more effective for the communities and removing the loadings, but it's just taking us a little extra long time.
Commissioner Loeb?
I appreciate you coming out here, and I'm trying not to ascribe any fault to you, because again, a lot of this, if not all of this, is not your doing. Obviously, you all are, at least as best I'm aware, not able to control the weather. If you are, then that's really cool.
I would love to be able to control it.
Let me know how to do that. That said, you know, I'm happy to move to approve this tonight, but I would ask, if you don't mind, and I'm trying to figure out the most polite diplomatic way to phrase this, but if you could relay back to Mayor Meehan and to the council, that if there are requests of this nature in the near future, let's say in the next several months, for additional extensions, I'd really appreciate if the mayor or her designee could actually come out here, because I don't wanna put you in a position that you don't deserve to be put in, but it's something where, it's causing me concern, and I understand you've highlighted some extenuating circumstances. I appreciate that, you know, that you've also acknowledged that Melbourne has at least a part to play in terms of not having had adequate staffing, but this is something where, quite frankly, if we're allocating money for you all, just spend the money we're allocating in a timely fashion, so that it doesn't come up again and again. That's all that I'd ask.
And we're truly trying to, and part of it is just the nature of number of projects that we've got on the books. I think if you looked at the next couple of years of projects, that we, we're not gonna ask for as many projects as we did the first couple of years, because we've realized that these projects are taking a little longer than we anticipated, and we've done a better job. I've done a better job, because I wrote the applications for the grants, to allow for a little longer time periods. And so it's just from a learning curve of making sure that we ask for the appropriate time, and then try to account for the unusualness that we seem to be running across lately.
And I appreciate it. Like I said, I'm gonna move, I'm gonna go ahead and move to approve it. Just with the side note, and this is not part of the motion, please convey to the mayor that if this comes up in the future, I'm in all likelihood not going to support extensions if she or her designee can't show up here. I don't want staff to be thrown under the bus, because I hate to put you in a bad spot that you never asked to be put in.
Unfortunately, our council meetings run the same nights as yours do, so unfortunately, they...
We have a day meeting as well, yeah.
But tonight's meeting was the same night as ours, and they had a special meeting prior to.
And if there's ever some need to set it for a morning meeting as opposed to an evening meeting, you know, I would certainly ask that staff, and I imagine, I probably don't have to ask staff, because I think they'd on their own volition, work with you all to make sure that an appropriate agenda is selected, but, you know, just please, if you could ask her to be mindful in the future with respect to these extension requests, I'd appreciate it.
Sure.
And I'll go ahead, and just to reiterate, I'm moving to approve this as listed for the extensions.
Commissioner Smith, or do we have a second?
I'm gonna second Mr. Loeb's motion, but I just want to weigh in here. I respect Commissioner Loeb's concern, but I don't share his concern. I understand that we're kind of in uncharted territory with all this. We're all trying to do the best we can to get the Indian River Lagoon cleaned up. You can only do what you can do, and so you're not costing us money, you're costing us time. And we're not talking three or five years' time, we're talking maybe months' time. So I just want you to know that while I respect his concern, I don't agree with it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. On to the big one. Item J1.
All right, Commissioners, this is a request to consider adoption of the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan 2019 update. And Marcie Frick is a water resources engineer with a consulting firm, Tetra Tech, that worked with staff to prepare this plan update that has been recommended by the Citizen Oversight Committee.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm gonna go through, and I'll try to make it quick, because I know there's a lot of other people that wanna speak on this item. The changes we made to the plan this year, we did make some major changes. We have several years of the plan underway, so we have some completed projects and information associated with those, some studies and surveys that were conducted, public input, and then Citizen Oversight Committee input on how we should ship some funding around to best restore the lagoon. So this is the table of contents. It's the same structure you all have seen the past few years. We do have a new chapter seven, so that's where the 2019 Plan Update goes, and then section eight is the summary of the plan, factoring in anything new with the 2019 update. So overall, if you look at the document, it's gonna look a little bit different. We have been working on making it ADA compliant, so that the document can be posted to the Brevard County website. We still have some edits underway. A lot of the changes are kind of behind the scenes, but you'll see mostly that the tables have been reformatted, and we got rid of a lot of the acronyms to try to help with the reader for the ADA compliance. The first few chapters, we did not have any changes. There's a lot of the background information, so where you'll see the bulk of the changes, start with section four, which is where we describe the projects. So section 4.1.1 is that public education and outreach. As it stands today, it is those five different campaigns. We will incorporate changes after the discussion next month, so the plan can either be approved as is, or, you know, pulling out this part of the plan. We did take some data we got from looking at some new modeling and monitoring of septic systems to update some of the benefits of the septic maintenance program. And we also recommended adding, as part of the sewer laterals education campaign, septic system maintenance. While people are out there looking at the sewer laterals, if there's people on septic systems, it's a good time to kind of hit both. And we found in some of the surveys that people aren't really sure if they're on septic or sewer, so it's a good opportunity to make sure that we're educating everybody. Some additional upgrades, changes that we made in 4.1.2 wastewater treatment facility upgrades. We received some new data since the original plan on the nutrient concentrations and reuse flows from these facilities, so we updated those tables. And we also recommended an additional facility, the Cape Canaveral Air Force Station facility, be added. We've placed that out a few years to give the county time to work with the air force station on the logistics of that. We have a new project option for spray field and rapid infiltration basin upgrades. These are discharge methods for some of the facilities, and we found that maybe upgrading the facility to AWT might not be the most cost-effective, but there's options to add some media under the drain fields or the ribs to help take up some nutrients as they're sprayed. So we looked at those options, and we recommended some pilot projects to test that technology. We also have a new option added for package plant removal and upgrades. These are some of those smaller wastewater treatment facilities. A lot were removed, but there are a few left in the county. A lot of these don't have the best treatment, and so we're looking to try to connect those to the sewer system where possible. We did need some more data on a lot of the facilities, so there's none of these recommended in this plan, but it was added as an option, so we have that there for the future. For the sewer laterals rehabilitation, that was added in last year's update, but we added some details from the first pilot study that was conducted in Satellite Beach, on some lessons learned there, so as we move forward with other projects, we have that information. The, one of the big changes was in the septic system removal and upgrades. We had a lot of new data. There was a big modeling effort that was conducted, and some groundwater monitoring that was conducted. Excuse me. And we reused that data to refine how we were ranking the septic systems and the neighborhoods for connection, so based on a lot of feedback we had, that this was an important source. We went ahead and reevaluated, and we rearranged some of the priorities for neighborhoods, and also where it wasn't feasible to connect a neighborhood to the sewer system, on where there were individual waste, septic systems that were having a big impact to the lagoon, based on proximity to a water body or soil, and recommended those for upgrades, so they would have nutrient removal technology. Another big update was in the stormwater treatment. We updated the basins that were recommended for treatment, so we used some new information there to add quite a bit more basins to that list. So all of those, we consider the reduced projects, so we're trying to reduce what's coming into the lagoon. The next part of the plan is remove, so we're trying to remove what has already made it into the lagoon. So this is where we have the first section for muck removal. This was another big change. We had a lot more data. FIT had done some studies, the muck finders had done some studies, and staff did some field studies, and based on those data, we got some new information on where the muck was located, the extent of it, and how much nutrients were fluxing, so that also helped us rearrange and reprioritize our areas. In section 4.2.2, surface water remediation, the county received some information on another technology that could be used for treatment. None of these projects, there's two project opportunities in there, are recommended for treatment yet. They're not quite as cost-effective as some of the other options, but we may like, we may wanna try to seek grants to test some of these and see if we can use that, those technologies. As we discussed earlier, we had a section on enhanced circulation that was purely inlets, but the study that occurred this last year with the National Estuary Program... Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm getting over bronchitis. It's almost gone. There was a study by the National Estuary Program, Canaveral Port Authority, and FIT to look at the causeways and those benefits, so we added those details. Since that's being done through the NEP and some other sources, it wasn't recommended as part of this plan, but we wanted to acknowledge that there's other efforts happening. We added a new section in Respond, so this is where we're taking our, we're trying to monitor and gather information about the projects, so we can keep adaptively managing. So we added a new section about what we've implemented to date, and what we've learned from implementing those projects. And the maps here show, from north to south, what has been completed in the first couple of years of the plan. been completed in the first couple of years of the plan. We also, so we added a new section, as I mentioned, for the 2019 Plan Update. These had the updated project cost shares that we give. So each year, we look at the average cost per pound of nitrogen removed by project type. And we had some new data as projects were getting completed on what that's actually costing. So we were able to update that cost share per pound of nitrogen and that went out for our partners to put substitute projects in this year. As Virginia mentioned earlier, we did add a new section on unfunded projects. So as you go through the plan, each section has a list of all the projects we looked at. We tried to pick the ones that were most cost effective to address each source type. But we do have a list of other ones that were evaluated and were not recommended for funding. So as we move forward, if there's opportunities for additional funding or some projects fall off the table, we have this list to go back to. We also added a more detailed section on how the contingency funds can be used to help expedite or modify any of the approved projects. This, this table is important for a couple of reasons. So on the left is the original plan and what it costs. And to the right is the 2019 Plan Update. So two things I want to point out. One is we did hear this year that human sewage projects were priority. The original plan had about $73 million for those. The current plan has $114 million. So we put about one and a half times more funding towards those projects. The other thing I want to point out is the experts we consulted when we developed the plan, as well as updated the plan, made it very clear that, you know, there isn't one silver bullet. You know, there's not one project you can do to implement that's going to solve this problem. So we did try to distribute the funds and really focus on where we could be most cost effective in each project type. And from the original plan to today, we have identified other types of projects as well. So we've tried to make sure we are funding what's going to help restore the lagoon as quickly as possible. Section 8 is the summary of the plan. We added a graphic of, you know, our plan outputs. So these are going to be the different project types. And based on implementing those, the outcomes we expect to see in the lagoon in different time periods. We updated all the summary tables of what these projects will get us in terms of reductions and the costs and how they're going to be phased out over time. And then we also have a series of appendices, which is some supporting information for the plan. And with that, I know that was quick, but I'll take any questions.
Just real briefly, I want to say you did a heck of a job getting that summarized. That's a task I'm happy was on you and not me. But thank you.
Okay, I have several cards. Dr. John Windsor. And after Dr. Windsor, we have Todd Scaldo.
John Windsor, Melbourne, Florida. And you don't shuffle those cards and put me first. Tell them I just come early, right?
Right. They're in order.
Yeah, if you want to get ahead of me, you have to come to the meeting earlier. There was a comment earlier about which scientists carry the most weight. And I just want to make sure, I've been on a diet for about a year now, but I feel, I still think I outweigh most of the scientists in the lagoon. Keep that in mind. Okay, John Windsor, Emeritus Professor again, SOIRL, COC member. We've heard your recommendations, both from you and the public, and that money needs to be shifted to dealing with human sewage. The plan update you have before you shifts considerable financial resources towards dealing with sewage. Please support the recommendation of your Save Our Indian River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee and approve the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan Update. Thank you.
After Todd, we have Lou Contrick.
Good evening. My name is Todd Scaldo. I live in Indian Harbour Beach. And I'm here on Mark Ryan. He couldn't make it tonight because he has council meetings, so it's conflict. But he'll try to make it here if he can, but he's not sure if he can. So I'm going to read something into the document that he wrote. I'd like to have it on the document. "You and the entire membership of Bovard County, of the county commissioners, will consider adoption of the 2019 Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Soil Plan Update as presented by the Soil Citizens Oversight Committee. As you know, in 2016, in advance of the November general election, where the Save Our Indian River Lagoon, Lagoon, excuse me, Half-Cent Tax Sales Tax was overwhelmingly approved by the voters. Bovard County adopted and presented to voters the need to fund the strategies to clean up and restore the lagoon as outlined within the Soil Project Plan. The Soil Project Plan and its annual updates provide a multifaceted approach to cleaning and restoring the lagoon. These strategies include the following: Projects to reduce pollution or pollutants would be fertilizer management, public outreach, education, water waste, or water, excuse me, wastewater treatment facilities upgrade for reclaimed water, septic system removal and upgrade, stormwater treatment, surface water remediation system. And then we have projects to remove pollutants would be the muck removal, artificial flushing. And then we have the projects to restore the lagoon, which would be like the oyster restoration, living shorelines. Bovard County and your partners, including municipalities, are working hard to develop the projects to meet the project plan and the expectations of the voters. Indian Harbour Beach has submitted projects, including expanding the reuse of stormwater in Gleeson Park, installing a second generation baffle box to treat more than 63 acres of the community, and muck removal to remove more than 188,000 cubic yards of muck in the canals. Including the Grand Canal is a major waterway service for all the southern Bovard County. As you know, Bovard County was the recipient of a significant legislative appropriation for muck removal here in Bovard County. The city of Indian Harbour Beach and Satellite Beach have submitted a similar local funding request for muck removal. And we will utilize the soil half cent sales tax as a local match that we believe will be looked favorable upon by the legislature for having skin in the game. This project will also remove solids that settled to the bottom of the canal in our city as a result for the discharge of the diluting sewers following Hurricane Matthews. And if you've known that, we were ground zero for a lot of that dumping in our canals in our city. And that's something that we really, you know, are concerned about. We are-
I don't want to cut you off, but your time's up. And we have a lot of cards.
Thank you.
Thank you. And after Lou, we have Danny Straub.
Good evening. Thank you. Lou Connick. And I live, I live in Melbourne. And I want to ask you to support the 2019 revisions. I've attended the COC meetings, almost all of them, and they're amazing. The staff and the COC representatives and the citizens all bring their information. And there is a very active, very analytical, very cross-examination-oriented process that goes on. So I particularly encourage Commissioner Lober, in your bringing the scientists, encourage them to come to the COC meetings. Come yourself. You'll like it. You like data. You like information. So why do I support, aside from the process, which I totally endorse, why do I support the plan? Because they've made some great changes and great additions. Here are a few examples. There's a new section about spray fields and rapid infiltration basin upgrades, where they're taking proven technology but recommending applying that in sites that we have not done before, which is using material that will take up a lot of the nutrients so it doesn't run off either in the surface water or in the groundwater. The projections in the plan call for spending $3.5 million. And the new technology or new, new approach is projected to remove 48,000 pounds of nitrogen a year. There was also a discussion about septic systems and the analysis that they've done, the modeling, and then the application to a model to simplify and make more effective the removal there with the septic systems. Stormwater projects, again, increasing, the plan calls for increasing from 13 million to 40 million, and to increase the removal for nitrogen, total nitrogen, from 142,000 pounds per year to 315,000. So you're seeing this very dynamic process with an excellent staff and the COC and the, you know, citizens' input, really shaping a plan, being responsive to new information, new analysis, new data. And so I endorse this plan and urge you to approve it. Thank you very much. And thank the staff.
Thank you. And after Danny, we have Gail Meredith.
I'm truly just here to answer any questions, if you had any, on our project specific. So we've requested some funding for this next year for some new projects, including some upgrades at our wastewater treatment plant, that we're really excited to start the moving process on those. And in very near the future, those projects are starting to be under design now, along with the other projects that we've listed in this year's project.
Do you have any? Is that an old light?
It's an old one.
Okay. Thank you. And after Ms. Meredith, we have Julie Finch.
Gail Meredith. I live in Satellite Beach. Thank you, Commissioners. I really hope you consider approving the plan, the updates to the plan. I think they're very good. The process has been good. There has been a lot of concerns about the current leadership in the commission, however. The lagoon community in general is fearful. A lot of things that have been said that trivializes citizen involvement have been damaging to the community. A lot of second guessing of the careful decisions that have been made, whimsically often, has been disconcerting. I haven't seen, I've gone to every COC meeting except for two. And I think that in a long life of environmental education, so one of the finest things I've ever seen, I think it's world class, what we've done here. But the saddest thing is our leaders don't seem to participate very much. Some of you haven't, haven't even been to a COC meeting. I think I've seen Commissioner Smith and Barfield, but I haven't seen the rest of you there. And I think you don't understand a lot of the energy and care and concern and data and research that has gone in. If someone walks into Commissioner Lober's office, they have more credibility than those of us who've worked thousands of hours on this project. It's sad to see it falling apart this way. And there are even rumors of lawsuits from cities that are concerned, as you must have heard them, that the general agreement is being violated, that is the foundation of everything. Having said that, I would encourage you to pass the lagoon update and to participate more enthusiastically in the future because it's like you have an adversarial relationship with this project that we've worked so hard on and so long. And some of you have just landed from another planet and suddenly looking at these things. And some of the people that you're referring to, Commissioner Lober, have come to the COC meetings and have been heard. But it's not, that's not the right thing to do. The thing is to line up for Commissioner Lober's office. You'll get more attention that way. I really encourage you to consider looking at the treasures we have and listening to people who are involved, rather than just coming up with new things and disregarding the work that has been done. Please consider voting for the update. Thank you.
And I, just one second. And I'll comment that, you know, typically, if a commissioner, and I've not been selected to be on that board, if a commissioner is an active member on that board, another commissioner should not be in attendance on that board, first off. So let's be clear on that. And secondly, my, my staff goes to those meetings. So, you know, some of what you said was cryptic, very accusatory, and I'm not going to go back and forth and try to defend it. But I'm just telling you, that's why I personally don't attend those meetings. I knew Commissioner Smith when he was on the board. Now Commissioner Lober is a member of the board. But my staff was at the last meeting. So Commissioner Lober?
I have a few comments with respect to that. First, I think it's rather presumptuous to say that any one individual, I would never presume to say that I speak for the lagoon community. Anyone that says that, I think that's rather telling as to what their level of confidence is in being able to speak for absolutely everyone. I think we're all, those of us that have done research and have basically delved into this issue, members of the lagoon community. And I don't know that any one particular individual is qualified to make a statement on behalf of everyone. In terms of things that are, I'm going to use your terminology, damaging to the community, you express some sentiment that there's been some damage done to the community. Coming up here, instead of in the hope of fostering intelligent debate, coming up here and demeaning folks on the commission will not in any way advance your cause. I can tell you, if you've not watched me on this commission, anyone that's tried to bully their way into swinging my vote has not been happy with the outcome in terms of the way that I vote. So first and foremost, you know, I'll tell you, and on that same, I'll dovetail off that, as to threats of litigation from municipalities, hi, I'm not aware of any. Have you heard of any attorney Bentley?
I have not received any notices, no.
So perhaps you can speak for the legal community as well, because you know more than our county attorney and I believe all the folks that are sitting up here. Specificity is something that's oftentimes lacking when you have an individual that has no valid intelligent arguments to make. And when you listen to someone that doesn't have specifics and uses innuendo and casts aspersions-
Okay. Guys.
That's what I call into question, that individual's actual motivations and whether or not they're looking to bring intelligent debate, or alternatively, just to be disruptive and petulant.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yeah. You know, every time we have these lagoon meetings, they get very, very emotional. The last, last meeting when we left, someone just ripped me up on Facebook. And so I mean, I get it. And you know what, I know we've got to have thick skin up here. But I think we've got to find the places we can agree upon so we can move forward. We all have the same goal on this. So I think we need to operate at a level of adult immaturity. And, you know, you're going to catch a lot more flies with honey than, than getting accusatory. And, and so not, not any direct, to you ma'am, but just so y'all know, these meetings are televised. And I watch them a lot of times at home with my pajamas and my hair on top of my head. So it's not like we're not paying attention. We are. Because we have to be educated on these things because you guys call us to task at every meeting. So I just wanted to make that comment right now. Nobody is against the lagoon. Nobody is mad at the lagoon board. There's just a lot of different ideas. And my goodness, this is a big topic. So I just wanted to make that statement.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Julie Finch. How do you like following that, Julie? I hope that can be sweet. And just full disclosure, I used to work at the hospital. I know Julie from there. And I can tell you, you are like one of the finest people I've ever worked with. So- I greatly appreciate that. Not to embarrass you at all, but. And after Julie, we'll have James Glass. So name and address, please, for the record.
Thank you. I'm Julie Finch, resident of Satellite Beach, Florida. I'm here on representing City Manager Courtney Barker, who is out of town, and also the city of Satellite Beach. We are requesting that the county commission approve the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Plan as recommended by the Citizen Oversight Committee. A lot of planning and preparation work goes into these projects with the expectation that appropriate projects are funded in the plan. For example, our city has embarked on a partnership with Indian Harbour Beach and the county to clean up muck in our canals. We began licking our canals approximately three years ago when the county decided to dredge the Grand Canal near Pinata Causeway and the adjacent Finger Canals in the unincorporated area. We thought, wouldn't it be great to continue the project and complete the canals in Indian Harbour Beach and Satellite Beach? We have completed the muck survey, which shows a range of muck depths from one to five feet. Our cities have partnered now in submitting for a legislative appropriation in the amount of $7.3 million. It is critical that we are able to use the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Plan funds as the local match. Also, City Manager Barker, as a Citizen Oversight Committee member, wanted to thank you for all your support in the, for the lagoon and for your work in assisting us through some of the recent decisions, such as the marketing item. She believes that when we are able to make recommendations that help you address concerns in the community, that we all get better projects in the end. So thank you for all you do in the community, and we look forward to another great year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
James Glass. And after James, we have Ronald Reed. Yeah, she is. She's a lot of fun.
There's a copy of this for everybody.
Thank you.
I'll try and get through this in three minutes. I'm Jim Glass, Melbourne, Florida, member of the Florida Fly Fishing Association, a retired civil engineer. The proposed plan that has $225 million on muck removal and $114 million on sewage infrastructure projects. Also, the plan has unfunded projects of $430 million on muck removal and $314 million on sewage infrastructure. The total funded and unfunded projects is about $1.2 billion, of which 57% is going to be spent on muck. I take issue with spending so much money on removing muck before eliminating the sewage entering the lagoon from sewage plant discharges, heavy rainfall events, breaks and failures in sewage collection systems, the sewage from 41,000 septic tanks within 200 yards of the lagoon waters, and from sewage plants that need extra capacity that need to be, and need to be upgraded to higher standards. I know of no other Florida estuary where they made removing muck the number-one priority, and I have experience in several. Governor DeSantis and Florida Legislature have gone on record the need to fix Florida's infrastructure. Dade County is undertaking a $3 billion program to convert 60,000 septic tanks to a sewer system. Sarasota County committed to a plan in the 1990s to upgrade treatment plants to advanced wastewater standards and connect 13,000 septic tanks to a sewer system. Monroe County, in 2010, completed a $1 billion program to connect 23,000 septic tanks and 100 package plants to a sewage system. In conclusion, I ask the commission to defer approval of this plan until we can look at it in more detail about the chances, about the opportunities to make some changes in the plan. Some of these changes that I see may not be exactly the ones that we need to do, but consider this. Instead of spending $225 million funded money on the plan for removal of muck, why don't you put half this money towards the unfunded capital improvements plan for the county utilities department? Instead of spending $10 million on funding oyster bars, put these funds towards the construction of holding tanks and basins to hold the excess flow of untreated sewage plants during heavy rain events, rather than dumping the sewage into the lagoon. The basic change is to make sewage infrastructure projects, do them earlier in the plan, then do the muck removal, build the oyster bars, and plant the mangroves. And Mr. Lober, I have experience in causeways, if you want me to share that on you for some time. Thank you.
Mr. Lober?
Just want to thank you for spending quite a few hours speaking with me. I do want to address something briefly in terms of one of the comments that was made about, you know, who comes through my door or not comes through my door. Has anyone ever asked to meet with me and been refused in this room? Anyone? Okay. So, you know, just because Jim and several other folks have been good enough to come in on their own, on their own time and speak with me and share their engineering experience and expertise, it doesn't prevent anyone else from coming in. If someone wants to meet with me, I don't know that we've ever refused to set a meeting for anyone for any purpose in my office. So, you know, whoever wants to come, it's not a locked door. I'm there. I'm happy to meet with you now or in the future. So please, take the invitation. I'm happy to sit down with you. I can't promise I'll agree with you, but I promise I'll listen to you. Thank you.
Mr. Ronald Reed and Rick Worman?
I live at 960 Glen Abbey Way in Baytree. I object strongly to spending 53% of our sales tax money on muck removal. That's $225 million that is not dealing with a root cause. And I don't, nobody around here has talked about root cause. My undergraduate training was in physics. We understand things like that, and apparently, it's news. Scientific research has indicated that toxic algae blooms are caused primarily by sewage. The plan states without removing, ridding the lagoon of the sources that are causing the muck, that we're going to be dredging muck for the rest of our lives. Because as we take this muck out, move it up here, we get more muck accumulated here because we haven't removed the source, whatever's causing it. We did not vote our tax money to be used to remove muck in rich people's properties. There is $43 million in the plan for dredging muck in canal subdivisions. In Baytree, our homeowners association pays for the maintenance of stormwater retention ponds and for maintaining acres of wetlands. Should not the same principle apply to canal subdivisions? I want to go off script here for a minute. When I was growing up in a small town in western Pennsylvania, polio was damn near an epidemic. I know I got two of them. And so, somebody on high thought, this was before big data, it was being caused by sewage. We had open sewers. We had septic tanks that were doing all sorts of bad things. So they passed an ordinance. No more septic tanks, over, and the homeowner pays. The homeowner pays based on how many feet he had in front of his house. We had four lots. My parents had a lot of sweating to do to pay for this. They were all kind of deals. There were low-interest loans, no-interest loans, but the homeowner paid. Because way before, nobody put in sewers. Just like the developers in Florida didn't bother putting in floors, they went the cheap way, septic tanks. And now, let the homeowner own up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. After Mr. Worman, we'll have Stephen Moon.
Hi. How you doing, folks? Thank you for agreeing to meet with all the public here.
Have your name and address, please.
Rick Worman, 625 Kingsway, owner and operator Flatline Guide Service.
Thanks.
I am not really up here to, I don't have the education that everybody else has preceded me has talked to, but the one thing I do have that most people don't have in this room is 200-plus days a year on the lagoon. It is my observation that the lagoon is on life support at the moment. With each continuing alga bloom that occurs, I can notice personally and my clients notice the lack of fish that return once the alga bloom clears. I don't know what's the right way to spend the money, but to me, I can tell you that the alga blooms in North Merritt Island, where I fish all the time, occur in the same spots repeatedly. I'm out there all the time, and they come back, and they always start at the same places. They start where stormwater runoff or wastewater runoff accumulates, there's low-flow rate, you see the change in the water quality from saltwater to the freshwater that accumulates, and that is where the bloom will start out and then spread down the flats and to other places. I think any sort of restoration program at the moment, until we stop the influx of nutrients and biofuel going into the lagoon that is causing the algae bloom, is just a waste of our money that we all voted for. And I was a huge proponent of the half-cent sales tax. So I don't really have a lot to say besides that. I just think that we should take time, defer the motion, look into really where the money should go and what is going to fix the problem of the lagoon. Because I don't believe if we, this goes on for five more years, I don't believe there will be a fishery here. Now, I want to speak on an economic standpoint. I've been doing this since 2005, full-time. This is my job. That's how I support my family, that's how I support everything that I do. Clients used to come here, 2005, 2006, 2007, 2008, when the lagoon was good, there were sea grass. They don't come back anymore. From an economic standpoint in the fly fishing world, the Indian River Lagoon, I hate to say this, is kind of a joke as a fishery anymore. It used to be a destination fishery, it is not no more. People don't travel globally to come here like they used to in the 80s, the 90s, the early 2000s. That kind of, once we had the alga bloom of 2012, get out. I don't have new clients anymore. It used to be 30% of my business was new clientele. It's less than 5% now. All my clientele is repeat business that have been fishing me for years, and they come back, A, for the, we've built a relationship, and they like the fishery, and they really just come back in the summertime when the tarpon are here, because we have a phenomenal juvenile tarpon fishery, and these fish really don't care about the algae blooms. You know? The other thing that I've noticed that, you know, the one thing I will say is, I never get contacted, and I know I talk to a lot of other guides that get contacted by anybody that has anything to do with the lagoon or the lagoon committee, and these are the people that are out in the water 200-plus days a year, and they have a lot of input, and they might not have science input, but they have monitoring input. And that's what I think really needs to be put in place, is monitoring. Where do these alga blooms start? Why are they starting in that position there? And let's focus our money being spent in that general area so we can eliminate the algae blooms. Because if we don't eliminate this brown tide, in five years, these fish won't be here. I can tell you from last week's experience, algae blooms started in the south of 528. The fish, and I was fishing huge schools of black drum and redfish, they stayed out of the algae bloom. They stayed 200, 300 yards ahead of it, and they will not go back that way. And we saw triple tail in the flats, never seen triple tail in the flats in all my years of doing this, moving away from the algae bloom and staying ahead of it. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I hate public speaking, so I'm nervous as all hell.
You did great. Sure, go ahead.
Just a quick question, was it Captain Worman?
Yes, sir.
For those individuals up here that have some desire to meet with you, are you willing to meet with commissioners one-on-one?
Anytime. Anytime, anyplace. I'll make it my time, your time. If there's anything I can do, this is my lifeblood.
I appreciate it. Just one last question. In terms of that last item that you spoke about with respect to the, were you saying the fish were trying to avoid the algae?
Yes. Over the last couple of years, as we've occurred more and more algae blooms, they've learned, I think with the dissolved oxygen content, the lower oxygen content, you cannot go find large populations of fish in the algae anymore. You can't even find the turtles or the wildlife that was there. They avoid it. They go around it. They do not, when the algae bloom's going on, and then what happens right after the algae bloom dissipates, it seems to be like a four-month span. That's how long the bloom runs. Right behind it, about a month later, the clerg algae comes in and takes over the bottom, which suffocates the sea grass out. So now the sea grass can't grow, and then it has clean water. And it seems to be a repetitive cycle that's been going on since 2012. And I think the only way to really cure our lagoon, start off, is to stop the algae blooms first and foremost, before you can do any kind of restoration project.
I appreciate it. Thank you. I'm sorry for making you speak in public even a little more. Thanks.
Yes, absolutely.
My name is Stephen Moon. I have an office at 96 Willard Street in Cocoa, Florida.
You're an attorney, because it says Esquire.
I am an attorney.
Sorry, I didn't mean to out you.
That's okay. I am also the president of the Florida Fly Fishing Association and a resident of Brevard County since 1994. Brevard County is world-famous for two things: innovation in aerospace technology and the Indian River Lagoon. In 2001, I was in Vermont, and I was introduced to fly fishing. When I told the instructor where I was from, he spent the rest of the class talking about the Indian River Lagoon and the mosquito lagoon. Fly fishermen from all over the world knew this as a world-class destination. And like Captain Worman told you, as people would come and spend money in our community to fish here. I've seen the decline. All of the members in the Florida Fly Fishing Association have seen the decline over the years. Everyone in this room wants to save our lagoon. There's no question about that. The problem that we have is allocating more than 50% of the funds to muck removal is misplaced. Because all we're going to do is have to remove more muck if we don't stop the problem. And the problem is the nutrients coming into the lagoon, the sewage coming into the lagoon. If we don't stop it, we're just going to be revisiting this issue. And frankly, I don't think the citizens are going to allocate more money in the future to fix this problem if we don't do it right the first time. We need to allocate the funds appropriately. We can't just hit the gas pedal and think that muck removal is going to save everything. It's part of the solution. It is. We know that. But it can't be the entire solution. If we are going to keep the Indian River Lagoon as a world-class destination for people that spend a lot of money and a sport, that keeps captains like Rick Worman and his family in a house, in schools, then we have to address this problem the right way. We don't dispute the other members that are here in the Marine Resource Council. We know there's a lot of good science behind all of this, but I can tell you, I have raised tropical fish since I was a child. I have live-planting aquariums. If I have too many nutrients in that aquarium, I'm going to have an algae bloom. I'm going to lose fish, and I can't enjoy the hobby. Well, we have the same problem with our lagoon. We need to fix it. I think we can do it. We all want to do it. Let's allocate the funds properly. Thank you.
Commissioner Lober?
Just real quickly, my curiosity is going to kill me if I don't ask. What area law do you practice? Because I don't think we've ever come across one another.
Well, you know, I practice in Admiralty and Maritime Law.
That's why.
I did want to address one thing. You know, vessel owners are not permitted to discharge human waste into any waters. Okay? You have to be beyond, okay, a certain limit before you can do it. And now, we treat it. We regulate the cruise industry. We don't want them dumping their sewage in our water. But you know what? As citizens, we're dumping our sewage in the Indian River, and it doesn't have the flow that you have offshore. So if we're going to regulate them, well, what happens? Well, when they take their sewage off the cruise ships, where does it go? It goes to our treatment facilities. And those treatment facilities can't handle all of it. That needs to be updated. Because you know where it goes? Goes right back in the Indian River. We don't want that. And federal law controls what happens in our waterways, so long as they're navigable waterways. And frankly, I don't want the federal government coming down here and telling us what we need to do when we already know what we need to do. We have to do it here. And frankly, they're not going to help us if we don't do it right. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Dr. Lisa Soto and John Wyler. Is that for Lisa?
Thank you. I'm Lisa Soto, the Executive Director of the Marine Resources Council, the Marine Resources Council of East Florida, Inc. And I'm here to ask you to kindly approve the 2019 Save Our Indian River Lagoon Project Plan. I have stated repeatedly that this plan is based in science, that your staff is doing a tremendous job, and the contractor Tetra Tech is doing a tremendous job of gathering the facts and the evidence, running it through the Citizens Oversight Committee that is a representative of our community in terms of, we've got education people, we've got people who are interested in economics and environmental scientists on that committee. They represent diverse groups, they talk at length about the different project ideas, and they mull on the science. Everybody is given an opportunity to speak in front of the Citizens Oversight Committee and express their opinions. If they're valid, then they are investigated further, they brought forward for discussion. I mean, it is a process everybody should experience. I also was talking to Commissioner Zanardi earlier this week, and I agree that wastewater infrastructure is certainly a problem in Brevard County, and it's kind of tragic that it's on us to deal with the, I suppose, failure to act of previous commissions and councils. But we have this burden to bear. I also think that our plan is not to save our wastewater infrastructure plan, that we're trying to save a lagoon, that there are a lot of diverse sources of nitrogen and phosphorus. Yes, some of them are coming through the wastewater infrastructure. That is going to cost a fortune. It's going to cost more than we're collecting in our plan. If we put all the money into wastewater, we're going to put a dent in it, and it could be that it would take decades to get it done. And then what? What if it doesn't work? What if we still don't have, we still have stormwater providing nutrients, we still have, you know, other sources of nutrients coming down, tributaries, we've got septic tanks still that are going to be contributing to groundwater, et cetera. Needs to be multiple sources, source controls. We can't just be looking at a single solution. There's no silver bullet here. So I would encourage you to consider dealing with the wastewater infrastructure through a different economic means. You know, use the wastewater tax that you currently, or the fees that you have in place, figure out a different method to get it funded, work with the wastewater department instead of natural resources to come up with the plan for wastewater infrastructure. Perhaps the two departments come together to prioritize where the wastewater infrastructure is probably the most problematic to the lagoon, focus the eye on eye there, and look for long-term funding. Go back to your public and say, you want to save your lagoon? You know, I'm sorry, we need to ask you again to increase your fees to address this infrastructure problem. So we need to, you know, I encourage you to proceed with the plan. It's being managed and adapted every year. I think the way they're moving is what you've requested, it's what our public has requested, and I encourage you to vote affirmatively for it.
Commissioner Lober, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just, I want to actually give you guys a good plug for MRC. I went down, I think it was the Ted Morehouse Lagoon House for the event that you all had maybe a week or two ago.
Thank you.
And I thought it was good. It wasn't as lagoon-specific as I had hoped, but it was still informative. I was hoping to chime in a little bit, but I did see one of my colleagues on the commission there, and I thought, well, unfortunately, sunshine's kind of tied my hands. kind of tied my hands. But you all did a great job in terms of attracting a much bigger crowd than I would have anticipated. So congratulations on that. I think that was great. Thank you.
Yeah, I hope to see you again.
Commissioner Smith?
Soto, you have indicated that you're in favor of the current plan. What are your thoughts when you hear folks coming up here and saying that taking muck out of the lagoon is not the way to go?
I think that the staff at Natural Resources is doing a lot of research with FIT professors to better understand where muck is more of a problem. I've been involved in the FIT Indian River Lagoon Research Institute, and hearing the results of that research. And what we're seeing is that where the muck is, there's no life. There are no seagrasses. The seagrasses aren't going to come back. The bottom-dwelling organisms don't exist, so the food chain is broken down. Dr. John Treffrey and his team have demonstrated that the muck is just off-gassing or fluxing, contaminates back up into the water column at concentrations that we didn't expect. So we know that muck is a continued source, just in its legacy load. So again, bad decisions made in the past, you know, have resulted in this pollution load that we're dealing with today. It needs to, we need to get the muck out. There's no doubt about it. And I think that the way it's being, that it's going forward, is they're being strategic and figuring out where is it most problematic? How can we be as innovative as possible? I mean, we are the center of innovation here, right? We're at the space coast. We can use the great ideas. We can come up with the better tools. We can get it done better. You know, we're stepping up and being the leaders of maybe the world, if not definitely the state, in a community taking charge of its estuary. So everybody's got their eyes on us. You know, we're getting a million ideas of how do you proceed? I'm sure you hear them all the time. They need to be handled carefully. You know, the science needs to back them up. That makes sense. And I really feel like this plan, your Citizens Oversight Committee, are commendable, and the hard work that they're doing on their free time, volunteering hours and hours every week, every month, that they're doing a tremendous job of sifting through all the information to proceed in the best way possible.
Would it be correct to assume that if, and someone here earlier said that surveys have indicated that there's one to five, even seven feet deep of muck, that didn't just happen overnight?
Right.
And, but if we can theoretically get it out of there overnight, haven't we made a big step forward in improving the lagoon? And conversely, if we just, all of a sudden, just tonight, said, we're not going to spend any more money on muck dredging, and we're going to divert all these funds to sewer infrastructure, how many years would it take for us to get to the point where we fixed the sewer problem? Six, eight, 20 years?
It could take a long time. A lot of the, well, just adding some additional storage or putting in additional plants, or it's going to take maybe five or 10 years just to get the permitting done, right? So, you know, that's what I was saying. I mean, all of these things have different timeframes. You don't want to just do the long-term stuff. You want to do some things that take less time. You know, muck is one of those long-term projects, so you know, they kind of keep planning towards them until information tells you otherwise, right? So a lot of things take a long time, and a lot of pieces have to be put into play to get them accomplished. So you're working on the short-term stuff. You're doing, you know, multiple projects with multiple timeframes, doing, addressing different source contributions all at the same time. You don't want to put all your eggs in one basket, because what happens if you're wrong? So what happens if you put all the money in one thing, and then 20 years from now, you know, we had not addressed the source that's really the issue?
Well, I'm not a scientist, obviously. But would I be correct in saying that if we have a multifaceted attack on fixing the lagoon, would that not make more sense than doing all muck removal or doing all sewer? And isn't that what we're doing?
I think that we need to take a multifaceted attack. I'm a stormwater person, so I've worked in the groundwater realm. And we know that more pollution is entering water bodies through stormwater than any other source. So we can't ignore stormwater. We can't ignore the overland flow. We've got a serious wastewater infrastructure problem because of decades of lack of response. You know, it's kind of like a, you don't see it, so it's not a problem, because it's all underground and leaking underground. But that doesn't mean we don't address stormwater. We don't address muck. We don't address public education. We don't do, you know, we need to change society into, so that we live on the land in a way that's not polluting our water. And there's so, there are so many things and so many tacks to take to try to make that happen. We're in a position to do it. I would say the world is watching us. So that does put you guys under kind of a burden in our whole community, you know, in a situation. But you definitely need to take a multifaceted approach to ensure that something is going to work. You know, you want to start to show evaluable results. You want to start to show reductions. You want to start to show that things are improving as soon as you can. You don't want 20 years from now, we finally got our infrastructure plan in place, let's go, and you haven't done anything yet. So yeah, multifaceted approach, different angles, different timelines, you know, proceeding with the best science you have. I mean, you've got a good plan in place. You've got a good team in place. You've got a great Citizens Oversight Committee. You guys are terrific leaders. You know, let's get this done. Let's do it.
I agree. Thank you.
Wait, Dr. Soto, I have a question.
Thank you.[946.01][946.01](APPLAUSE)
And I, you know, I've known you many years, and that's why when I have a lagoon question or I have an environmental question, I ask you, because I trust you, and I think I made that pretty clear in the office.
Thank you. It's an honor.
And I don't believe anybody on this commission. I know that that's the fear, and I keep hearing that the sky is falling, because the commission's going to use all the money for infrastructure. I've not heard a single commissioner say that. What I have heard is that more priority needs to be spent. And you and I, the reason why I say that, you know, we've known each other a long time. You and I have had this conversation, whereas I don't know how you continue on with a multifaceted plan without addressing that. Because as, you know, the guy who's been fly fishing and has a business will tell you, until, and anybody else that's come up here that's a scientist or not, until you address why the muck started to begin with, then you're just pulling out muck to have it build up in another 20 or 30 years if you did get it all out. So I mean, we obviously have to take care of the stormwater. We have to take care of the septic and the I and I and old pipes, and increase our capacity at our sewage plants. And I think that that's probably what all of us probably think is a good idea. Where there's some debate is, should the utility burden the entire cost when we're dumping, you know, 10,000 gallons of raw sewage into the lagoon? Like, that makes, that makes your head want to come off when you hear that. I mean, how do you sell to the public that you care about this lagoon, and you're working hard, and you're working for this great plan, and you're doing all this great stuff, and education, and outreach, and, you know, conversions from septic to city and all this? How do you convince people that you're doing all this, and then dump raw sewage in the lagoon? I know the alternative is to back it up in people's houses, but I know we need to increase capacity. It's just a matter, and where you may have some disagreement with some of us up here is, should we be using at least a small portion of those monies, so we're not, you know, putting the entire burden on utility customers, because we have had failed, say, priorities of different commissioners in the past, where maybe we should have been addressing this before? And I'm sure we didn't anticipate the growth. And you and I also said, regardless, the growth, we're going to need those bigger, those higher-capacity plants, because the growth isn't going to stop. So that will always be something that we want to be ahead of, so we don't end up in this, you know. And another quick question, and I know everybody has questions, and everybody's got their lights on, but when we start, and I could ask Ms. Barker this as well, when we start dredging up all this muck, I mean, what kind of residual, what's happening to this muck when we're stirring it up? I mean, I know we can measure it. We can test it. We can, we know the nitrogen content and everything. What's happening? What are the long-term effects of us doing such an excessive amount of muck dredging?
Yeah, I'd almost rather Ms. Barker address this one, but...
And I know we can test water at different points. I understand that. But that's probably pretty important as well.
Do you want to take it?
So the permits require us to monitor close to the dredge, and outside, we have to put up turbidity curtains around where the dredge is working, and monitor outside of the curtain as well, and compare the turbidity inside the curtain to outside the curtain. We have to stop work if we exceed certain thresholds that depend on, that vary, depend on where we're working in the lagoon, and how sensitive different parts of the lagoon are to changes in turbidity. We also monitor the outflow from the dredge material management areas, to monitor how many nutrients and how much turbidity is being returned that way as well. One of the things that is in this plan update is funding to further scrub nutrients out of that return water for every single dredge project, to scrub as much nutrients as possible out of that return water. It's not something that any agency, that any other estuary, that anybody else has done, but the technology is there, and if we can implement it in our projects, then we can clean up the lagoon faster.
Okay. Well, I thank you. I mean, I believe Commissioner Loeb probably has a question, but I, oh, you have a light, too?
I had a light.
Oh, it was full, and it was, somebody had it twice, so I cleared it.
If you want to go first.
And can I address your, we talked about the need for more capacity. And I mentioned that, from what I understand, if you build a new wastewater facility for storage of wastewater, that you can still fill it up, that you, there's no requirement that you have a percentage of volume saved for overflow situations.
Right. And that's a policy thing that we can change on our own. I mean, we can choose sample and run ourselves.
Remember that, when it's time to do that, that you need to save some volume for those overflow situations until those lines can be replaced.
But I think the misconception's been made, and whether it be by people either on the committee or the public, that there's commissioners that want to just sweep the IRL, the Indian River Lagoon funds, and just do all infrastructure, and that's just not true. That's absolutely not true.
Well, that's good to hear. I haven't heard that, but there's...
Well, I know, but it's been said. And I just want to say, you know...
Thank you.
We collect $4 million a month. We should be putting some of that toward our infrastructure. And that's just somewhere where we may not all agree, but...
And I like to say we are.
Did you not hear that in one of the presentations that...
But I guess the debate is on how much we're putting toward our infrastructure.
Who, didn't you say that we were, this year, we were putting X, Y, Z? How much amount more are we doing this year for, or this proposal for the...
I think, I believe Commissioner Pritchett had questions for Ms. Soto first, if that's okay. Dr. Soto, Commissioner Pritchett?
We're going to have to put you on staff before the night's over here.[1311.58][1311.58](LAUGHTER) Just a quick question, and we've been doing all this talk, but the muck itself, it releases nutrients also, doesn't it?
That's correct.
So that's when we first started talking about this, I'm still trying to learn it, but you guys had addressed the situation that this muck is releasing a lot of nutrients that's causing a lot of the algae blooms. So I think that that's got to be part of the equation. I do agree totally, we've got to quit putting bad stuff in, and we've got to get the bad stuff out. And Commissioner Isnardi, I totally agree with you. We've got to fix the wastewater situation. Totally. I totally believe this. And I think we're going to have to, this is just fair. I mean, we've got this tax coming in. We've got to do these things. We're going to have to put on our big, I don't want to say this in public media, you guys don't say it, but we're going to have to own up, and we're going to have to get the rates consistent with fixing these problems. And here's my struggle with using these lagoon funds. This is county-wide tax. We told everybody we're going to do this. And I had everybody in my district saying, Rita, don't let them fix failing infrastructure with this, and derail some of that general fund tax on this. So I'm like, okay, because, you know, if we get to where we're doing everything we need to do with these funds, I want to get rid of the tax, and I want to go ahead and increase the user fees that we're paying for our own waste. Everybody should have to pay for their own waste. Everybody should have to. And so this is something we need to look at and do, and we need to go ahead and do it. So let's say Palm Bay just raised a lot of their rates, and they're getting responsible with their sewer and stuff. I don't think it's fair to make them have to pay this tax and have to increase their individual to do this. So I don't know how to do this. I don't know how, we need to maybe talk to the cities, make sure they're being responsible with their rates. But we need to start lining these pipes. We need to build the existing facilities, not the existing, the new facilities that we need to do. We need to get the state of Florida with us, and I've just called every single one of our representatives, saying, please do something to let us mandate septic tank inspections. So we can't do that right now, but these are the things we need to do. Guys, we're going to need to raise these rates on the user fees. They're enterprise funds. They should be paying for their own stuff. We need to build what you're saying, Commissioner Isnardi. There should be nothing leaking into this system. And I'm going to ask you guys later, I want to do a workshop on the vulnerable areas in the county. We need to start addressing them with some funding now and get ahead of it. And I know we've got $17 million we started working with doing some of these projects, but, you guys, I don't feel like I have enough confidence in what you have going on in the South as far as these problems. And I think we need to get aggressive with addressing it. So I'm in with that, if y'all want to do that. But I'm probably going to be in favor of this plan tonight. I would like, I don't know, kind of wish we did this board like we've done this with the others, and all the commissioners are on it with them. But thank you for all your hard work, and you seem to have a lot of knowledge, and I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Don't go away yet. Commissioner Loeb?
Yeah, a couple of things. I just want to clarify some things, and bear with me if it sounds similar to what you've heard before. First, I want to jump on what Madam Chair said, as far as her statement that she doesn't believe anyone up here is inclined to totally stop demucking. That's absolutely correct, as best I can tell. I know that it's great to make a boogeyman argument, and I'm not saying you've done that at all. I don't believe you have. But I think there are some folks that unfortunately mischaracterize, whether intentionally or inadvertently, what the position of some of the individuals sitting up here might be. I think there's just a balance that needs to be struck, and I'm not hearing anything incompatible from you, or really from anyone that's come up this evening, between demucking and then also addressing the root cause that's introducing the nutrients in the first place. I will say, and I'll give you an opportunity to comment if you'd like, that I do have some concerns over the release of potentially toxic substances, heavy metals in the demucking process. I don't think that that in and of itself necessarily rises to the level that we don't demuck anymore. I think it doesn't necessarily rise to that level, but I think it's something that perhaps we ought to be cognizant of in determining where we demuck, how much we demuck, and how many resources to put toward it. And bear with me if this sounds a little elementary, but sometimes the simplest explanation or the simplest example is oftentimes the best, or at least in my mind, this works. For the bulk of my life, I've had at least a saltwater fish tank. I started, when I was a little kid, I had just fish. And now I've got all sorts of critters, that, some of which may outlive everyone sitting in the room, because it's, I mean, I've got anemones that live 80-plus years, and all sorts of fun critters. And my problem is I have too much new life, not enough. And one of the things that I figured out over a period of probably, I don't know, 25 years of having fish tanks, maybe even more, is you can deal with it on the front end, or you can deal with it on the back end. And what I mean by that is, and John Wyler's seen the aquarium that I have, he hasn't seen all the filtration that I've got. I've got some new toys over there. But I've learned essentially, and I analogize the tank to the lagoon, and people may say, oh, it's stupid. It's, you know, it's only 150 gallons, and you're talking about something that's exponentially larger. But what I mean by that is, you're dealing with a body of water that's largely stagnant and has very limited flow outside of that closed system. And you're also dealing with a body of water that has a continual introduction of nutrients, which end up breaking down to ammonia. And I'm not going to go through the science one by one unless you want to. But the point is, you're introducing that, in my case, in the form of seafood, and fish food, and shrimp, and what have you, and that ends up breaking down, and it's got to get taken out of the system. In my case, what I do is, I've got a protein skimmer that would be astronomically expensive to implement on an industrial scale that we'd need for the lagoon. I just added an algae scrubber that's good for probably 100-something gallons larger of a tank than what I've got. And what I've kind of figured out with that, and I don't claim to be able to translate that perfectly to the lagoon, because I don't think it's possible, but it's rare that I have to do a water change. I checked, my salinity's perfect. I have unmeasurable, and I never have any measurable ammonia, nitrite, nitrate, phosphates, nothing. It's pristine, because I've invested so much on the front end, on keeping the nutrients out, or instantaneously removing them, such that it doesn't require me to go in there and syphon it using gravity, to remove algae that grows, or anything that falls to the ground, which ends up getting snatched up anyway by crabs and urchins and what have you. But I kind of take what I've learned with that, in the general or the macro sense, of rather than leaving all that out on the front end, which I could easily do and still maintain similar water quality, and I guess the difference would be that I'd have to deal with removing that constantly. And when I take a syphon, and I'll eventually have to do it at some point, whether it's four months from the last time I did it or otherwise, it depends on what the nutrient loads are, and I'll take a look. And if it looks good, I'm not going to change water unnecessarily. But I look at it, and I wonder, with the lagoon, with demucking, are we really foregoing opportunities on the front end that would enable us to demuck less? Not to say that we don't demuck at all. I think that we're eventually going to have to demuck, even if the river is essentially perfect. It's going to have to happen at pinpoint locations, whether it being creeks that tend to get flow issues, or that have nutrient loading issues that we can't perfectly address. But I think it's important that we at least understand whether we're on the same page with respect to it being a balance that needs to be struck, even if we can't agree 100%. with respect to it being a balance that needs to be struck, even if we can't agree 100% on where to draw that line or where that balance falls between demucking and addressing the nutrient loading on the front end. And I think that's the sense, at least that's what I'm getting from you and from everyone out there and everyone up here. Is that a fair statement? I don't want to put words in your mouth.
Well, there's a lot of fair statements in there. I like your analogy about the aquarium.
Thank you.
And there is the need... I have one, too, to sometimes suck the muck off the bottom, right? Like, you still have to do that part occasionally. So I want to go back to the decision-making process, because I think that's what we're all struggling with. You need... You know, there is a method. The method that the plan uses is nitrogen reduction costs per pound. And they're using the best available information, the science that's available, to calculate what that is. And the best available information on the extent that wastewater is impacting the lagoon. And how much, you know, is the cost of nitrogen per pound of wastewater impact versus the cost of nitrogen per pound for removing muck? It's the logical way. You know, it's the... When you're in the limelight and everybody's staring at you and trying to watch what you're doing and making sure you're doing things in a logical way, cost-benefit analysis is darn logical, right? So that's where we're at. They're using... And that's, you know, what I'm standing behind, is the plan is based on a logical method that is using the best available science. So either you change the method, you say, we're not gonna do it on nitrogen. We're gonna do it on bacteria. Or you're gonna do it on something else, and then you can skew the method to address wastewater more, if that's what you want to, you know... Or you just, you know, continue to investigate, you know, to what extent is wastewater impacting the lagoon, which is what they're doing. They're... We're doing groundwater study. You know, they're improving as we move along. You guys passed the septic tank ordinance based on sound science. You know, it's a million... It's 1,000 points of light. Even wastewater, there are so many things. There are the lateral lines. Are we gonna talk about, you know, trying to subsidize homeowners who can't afford to replace their laterals? There's the main lines that some of them need to be replaced. Some of them can be slipped. There's the treatment facilities themselves that need to be upgraded or not. There's the spray fields. There's these reclaimed water irrigation, you know, that's spraying 28 milligrams per liter nitrogen all over the place. I mean, there's not... Even in just the wastewater realm, there's like a million... 1,000 points of light to address. So I think we're in agreement. And I really... And I like your aquarium analogy. I think it's very similar. But that, you know, you have to control the sources of nitrogen and phosphorus, and you also have to remove the accumulation of debris on the bottom that's going to be continuing to off-gas ammonium and nitrate into your fish tank and into your lagoon.
Can I just one quick follow-up? Thanks. Now, another thing, and I'll just tell you, I mean, flatly, it confuses me. When I see proposals, even the advertising or the outreach proposal that we saw earlier, and some items, if we're looking at cost-per-pound nitrogen, assuming the science and the math is good, and let's, for the sake of argument, say it's good, and the numbers are soundly based, they're good estimates, the data's good. It confuses me when I see numbers that are great, let's say, under $20 per pound, just to throw out an arbitrary number, and then I see in the same proposal or a portion of that proposal, suggestions to spend over $100 a pound on nitrogen. So it throws me off, because I understand if we're gonna have one marker that we're using basically to get as close to an apples-to-apples comparison as possible, why we're sometimes disregarding that marker, even the groups that are largely proponents of using that marker, whether, again, whether you use nitrogen or phosphorus. But in this case, let's stick with nitrogen, just to make it simple. How is it that the plan, or at least portions of the plan, don't focus exclusively on that, on the cost-per-pound nitrogen? I'm not saying that we should, but I'm just wondering, why is it that that's not the exclusive focus?
I can't answer that. I think... Can you answer that, Ms. Barker?
Yes. So if you look at, within each project type, right, we identified all the obvious projects, and we estimated the cost-effectiveness of each of those. So we went through 100 different potential septic-to-sewer conversion projects. And each one has its own specific costs and benefits. And so we kept... We prioritized them from most cost-effective to least cost-effective. And we continued down that list until we got to a breakpoint that was around $1,000, $1,200 per pound of nitrogen removed. We did that for stormwater. We did that for wastewater treatment, plant upgrades. We did that for, you know, all these different types of projects. Then what's in the front of the plan is when then all of the wastewater projects or all the septic-to-sewer projects that are recommended for funding, tally all of them up, you know, the $68 million or whatever for those, and what is the nutrient reduction benefit from that same list of projects, and come up with an average cost per pound. So the table in the front of the plan that talks about the average cost, that's where you see a variability. But if you go down the individual tables for each project type, you'll see that we fund everything until we get to $1,000, $1,200 per pound as our breakpoint, so that it is even in terms of how we decide, you know, when do we stop funding more septic-to-sewer and start funding more stormwater or vice versa.
Thank you.
And when you're talking tens of thousands of pounds, I mean, how sure can you be in your accuracy if you're estimating project costs, like for, say, like, you know, facility expansion and that sort of thing? If you're wrong on that number, then you're wrong on your calculation.
That is definitely true. So part of what Marcy Frick was saying is, in this update, we gathered information on septic-to-sewer costs, not just from our projects that are moving forward and the latest estimates from the county's consultants that are designing those projects, but also from recently completed projects in the surrounding counties. So we're using, you know, the best available cost information for what it takes to build these projects. And then with the septic ordinance, we have, you know, a whole new body of science on what are the benefits for those specific areas where we've targeted a septic-to-sewer project. And the same is true with all the other project types. So in muck removal, the IRLRI team at Florida Tech visited the 50 largest worst accumulations of muck in the lagoon. And they collected samples of that muck, and they estimated how much nutrients are being reduced from each of those deposits. When we adopted the initial plan, we had very little of that data. And so we based the plan on an average of that flux of nutrients from muck degradation. Now we have data for each of those specific deposits. And so we use that new data to say, oh, well, this muck right here is releasing 700 pounds of nitrogen per acre. This muck over here is only releasing 37 pounds of nitrogen per acre. So we're not funding this one anymore. We're gonna focus on these that are, you know, hundreds of pounds of muck per acre. And that's why we were able to, in this plan update, achieve just as much load reduction by spending, even though we're spending less on muck. And those dollars were reallocated to doing more septic-to-sewer projects.
Are we done with the doctor?
We're done with it. Thank you. Thank you for your leadership.
Is there anything you want to add? Because the mic shares, because you deserve it.
Well, I appreciate it. I just want to thank you for your leadership and for your hard questions, and know that I'm available. I sent an email to each of you asking for a meeting. I'd love to come in and talk to you further about that, what I sent the email about, or anything that you want to talk about. So consider the door open.
Thank you.
And do come see us at the Lagoon House.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
John Wyler. And after John, we have Bill Kerr. Name and address?
Oh, 4240 South Tropical, Merritt Island, John Wyler. I listened to all these arguments tonight, and some of them are pretty interesting. But I've also looked at the data from an engineering and a physics standpoint. And I really appreciate the gentleman earlier who was a physicist who brought up the root cause item, because most engineers and physicists, when we're trying to solve a problem, we look to the root cause to come up with the solution. So that's a very important point. And I'll go back to that in a second. But Commissioners, I've reviewed the updates to the plan and believe the revised plan still has too much of the funds dedicated to muck removal, just that simple. Spending over 50% of the total funds for the plan for muck removal, in my opinion, is a misuse of funds. The focus should be on expenditures to get us the most bang for the buck sooner than later. And in that regard, I recommend that the county commission put focus on the major wastewater treatment plants existing and new. And equally important, their connecting wastewater network are sewer transport pipelines. I recommend that you modify the expenditures, increase wastewater treatment by 20%, and reduce muck removal by an equal 20%, so that muck removal becomes only 30% of the overall plan during this plan period. That takes care of an awful lot of muck, 30% of that total 500 roughly million bucks. And let me say this. I live on the Banana River Lagoon. I have a sand bottom on my portion of my backyard, but I can't see it because of the algae bloom. I have no muck. So muck removal is not an issue where we are. It's the algae. So what's causing the algae? What's the root cause? Is it the muck somewhere else in the lagoon? Water River, for me, in the lagoon, is not a lot of muck. It's gotta be the algae itself. It's not the muck. And if you take and take a five-foot section of muck and disturb it and stir it up, try to pull it out, you're gonna put an awful lot of nutrients in the lagoon while you're trying to suck that out. It's gonna make the problem worse in the short term, not in the long term, but in the short term. I would like to see a short term, and I'm sure that the captain who fishes for a living would like to see a short-term result. We need some results to get the blooms cleaned up. If muck is the real problem in the long haul, it's easier to take muck out than to do the other things. Let's do the hard things up front. They'll give us the big bang for the buck and probably get us... Get rid of the algae blooms in the short term. Thank you.
Okay. Question?
Mr. Wyler, just a quick question. Could you, in real brief terms, could you advise the commission as to the work that you've been doing with respect to looking at the location of the septic tanks up and down Merritt Island and the surrounding areas?
Sure. I went through the utility, you know, county's utility plan and looked at all the existing sewer networks. And what I found is that there are one or two main lines that they were installed would contribute significantly to reducing probably the flow into the lagoon. Portions of about 50% of Newfound Harbor already has a sewage system, central sewer. And extending a main line down there would be good. Extending a main line in portions of North Merritt Island would be good. And that would allow these communities that have... That aren't septic today to relatively easily connect into the central sewer system. The central sewer system or waste plant for that portion of the county is on Sykes Creek. It's called the Sykes Creek Plant. It's right on 520. Has the capacity to handle additional sewer flow into it if we only had the main lines there. So you can get rid of a lot of the problem just by... And this is not as expensive as a lot of things, putting that main line down.
Let me ask you one last question, if I may. On the east side of Merritt Island, hugging the Banana River, I believe slightly north of 520, remind me, was there a particular area where there's absolutely no septic that would be an easy fix from your estimation?
Yes, there is.
Where's that?
It's Milford Point Road. And to my knowledge, I have to validate yet, but to my knowledge, all those homes are on septic. It's only about 50 houses. But it's right on the river and on a canal and the river itself. And it's an easy... I mean, the main line going to the sewage plant passes right by it. It's just why it never got put in, who knows? But that would be an easy early priority that would probably contribute a significant decrease in that portion of the Banana River.
How far do you think those septic systems or the drain fields in your estimation? How far are they from the river? Are we talking 50 feet or 1,000 feet?
They're within 50 feet of the river, because the properties are small on that road. They would be some of the worst. And there are older houses there also. Some of those houses there are from the '60s.
So in all likelihood, you wouldn't anticipate they have advanced wastewater treatment, or I'm sorry, advanced denitrification?
I would doubt that. I don't know that for a fact, Commissioner, but I would doubt that.
Thank you, sir.
But there are other areas similar to that that would be relatively easy to put on central sewer and get the septic systems, you know, out of the way.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, sir.
Yes, go ahead.
I'm sorry. I know this is weird, but Milford Point is one of the high priorities in your plan. It's one of the first five priorities. It's well underway in terms of design, and it's one of the five projects that we've requested legislative appropriations to proceed with in the coming year.
Thank you.
It's called Sykes M. in the plan. But there's maps in the back. I can meet with you and show you.
Mr. Bill Kerr. And after Bill, we have Daniel Williman.
Madam Chairman and other board members, my name is Bill Kerr. I'm a fourth-generation Brevard County...
Address, please.
Pardon?
Can I have your address, please?
Oh, sure. 401 Ocean Avenue, Suite 204, Melbourne Beach. And my personal residence is 323 Marlin Place, Melbourne Beach.
You didn't have to go that far, but thank you.
But... Hello, Eden. I've been a practicing scientist in Brevard County for 30 years. Own my own company. Spent nine years on St. John's River Water Management District's governing board. One of the things that I... Oh, and I'm also on the management committee of the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, now the Indian River Council. And I served in 1990 to start the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, and I still serve on that board. I've learned a lot in my time. One of the things I know is there's no perfect plan. Never. You do the best you can and plan the best you can. Serving on the St. John's Board, I learned to trust my staff. As an individual, you cannot help... You cannot be able to absorb everything that needs to be absorbed in the detail that needs to be absorbed to come up with a correct plan. So my counsel to y'all is, trust your plan. They have come up with a way to assess it by dollars per nitrogen or phosphorus removal. There are parts of the plan that are more well-funded. There are parts of the plan that are less well-funded. It's done on science, the best available science that we have. If I was going to try to torpedo a plan, I wouldn't even go to the Citizens Committee meeting. I would come here and voice my specific opinion. That would influence you all, and it has, and I've watched it all night long. So my counsel to you is, trust your plan, trust your staff. There's enough money to go around. The sewage people, water treatment plants, they've got an income source. We pay for it. So as far as I'm concerned, let sewage pay for itself. Let the plan pay for the improvement of the lagoon. In 1990, nobody was talking about how bad the lagoon was, because it wasn't that bad. It was in problem, but not that bad. We've got people talking about it. Everybody's enthused about it, and it's wonderful. Let's keep that. Let's keep the debate, but trust your staff and your plan. Because if you don't do that, if you don't have a plan and you start micromanaging the plan later, you're gonna spend dollars errantly that you shouldn't have, because it is the... What you're doing has not had the thought process and the public testimony and the hard work of scientists to back it up. So my experience says, trust your plan. Thank you.
Thank you. And after Daniel, we have Dr. Skarange.
Good evening, Council. Dan Williman, Satellite Beach. I've heard a lot of good opinions, a lot of good input tonight. I don't want to argue either for or against removing muck. It has its benefits. There are concerns as well. I'm glad, Commissioner Lober, I'm glad you brought up the toxic compounds. That's what I want to talk about. One thing I have not heard mentioned here tonight is PFOS. I've been working very closely with the... I've been working very closely with the Fight for Zero Initiative in the area, and we've done testing in the river, found 50 parts per trillion of PFOS, and our results were backed up by Ms. Barker's initiative with Applied Ecology. But also Applied Ecology, in the most recent report that I read, they also tested the PFOS levels in the muck, and those levels are orders of magnitude higher than what's in the water. And I would like to know that if you guys are gonna pull this muck out, I would like to know that it goes where it's safe. I don't want to see it sit on a spoil island and drain all that out into the river, or to go out to Sarno landfill, which I hear is unlined, and trickle down into the ground, you know what I mean? I just, I would like to urge you to look into the proper handling of this muck should you decide to dredge it out of the canal. Thank you.
On up.
Hi, Bob Skarange, 200 Yell Place, Rockledge, Florida. I think it's very smart of you guys to look at minimizing the cost to remove things like nitrates, right? Makes sense, you figure out what is the most economical, and then you focus down that, you keep the plan somewhat balanced. But one of the things that worries me is you trust the numbers on here, like the gospel truth. We've all said, you know, maybe they're right, maybe that, well, what is the error band on this data? So I want to point you to Table D4. If you look at Table D4, I hope you have the report in front of you, you'll see that they break up the entire continuum of septic tanks into 55 meters, 150 feet, right? More than 150 feet. 55 meters, 55 to 219 yards, and then 219 yards and beyond. And you'll see that when you jump, let's say from 54 feet to 56 feet, you get a four times reduction in the cost of removing. When you jump from 219 yards to 220 yards, you get 1,000 times cost. Now, we know that's not real, we know it's a continuum. The effluent closest, the septic's closest to the river are the worst, and the ones further away, and it is not a step change, any hydrologist will tell you. I have a PhD in fluid, fluid dynamics, I can tell you that. So one of the problems with this study is it doesn't have high enough fidelity. There should either be a continuous curve they use, or there should be far more than three bins. This is called a bin analysis. You treat everything as discontinuous bins, but the jump between the bins shouldn't be so high. So I would put to you that since you're putting so much value in this report, maybe not for this report, but maybe for 2020, push it back to the people who are getting paid a lot of money to create this report and say, this is not a good report. Now, I've only looked at this one section because I was here for something else and I brought this for reading material. Well, I'm an engineer. And so I've only looked at one of these, but my question would be, do they do the same fidelity in all of it? Because you're relying on these numbers, you're talking about dollars, you're saying, well, it's under $1,000, it's under $200. And this is not right. Look, you think about it, most houses on the river have a septic tank way closer than 55 meters, probably less than 50 feet, one-third of that. So if you look at the slope of that curve, you're gonna see that number is much, much steeper as you get closer to the water. So it's skewing your results. So I would push it back to the people who got paid to do this and say, do a better job. That's all I had to say. Oh, one other, one other quick thing I wanted to say, I've asked this question a couple of times. When you take the muck and you bring it up on land, and then you let the water, the muck settle, and you let the water go back, you add what's called a flocking agent, flockulating agent, to help the silt settle down. I would like to know that someone has looked at that flock agent and make sure it's not long-term having an effect. I've asked that question several times, been told it's trademarked. So I would offer our company to do free analysis for you, if you want to give us some of that, and we'll tell you what's in it, to make sure there's no toxic substances or anything else that might be causing a problem five years down the road.
Don't go away.
And you see, got yourself in trouble here.
I'm not in trouble.
In terms, well, by reading it, I think you probably got yourself roped in, if I can help it here. In terms of the flockulating agent, most of the time, and correct me if you believe my understanding is wrong, are they not resins that'll typically bind with anything that causes turbidity in the water, basically increasing the weight and causing it to drop?
No, not exactly. They are chemical which causes things to bind, and it could be because it's polar, it could be for a lot of reasons, but that doesn't mean it wouldn't do the same thing when it goes off back into the river. In other words, the flock agent doesn't completely stay in the pond, if that's what you're asking me.
Okay, and then last question for you, and I promise I'll let you go after this. Would you be willing to meet with my office, and if so, what's a good way to get in touch with you?
About what? What do you want to meet with me about?
I want to talk about flockulating agents.
Well, actually, if you want to talk about flock agents, you need to talk to a guy by Dr. Paul Yelington, and I can, you guys can contact me, I'll give you his number. He's, I'm a mechanical engineer, he's far more expert in that field, he's a chemical engineer at MIT.
I see passing the buck there.
No, no, I want you to have the right consultant so you get the right answer, because you base tremendous amount of money on these decisions, and I--
We'll call your wife, and we'll just say, please, we'll ask very nicely.
Yeah, I'm certainly welcome, but Paul Yelington would be the better person, and I know he's available, and he would have come tonight, but he has a Boy Scout meeting, so.
Fair enough, I appreciate it.
Priorities.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm sure you're probably wondering why I said that, and maybe people don't know, but he's married to one of our senators, one of our local senators. Sorry.
Sorry, may I?
Sure.
Again, sorry, and Dr. Strange, you're absolutely right about the bin analysis, and I realize you were, you know, looking at the plan here tonight. So the table that you pulled, D4, the reason why it's in an appendix now, is that was all the information we had in 2016 when we were given a couple months to develop the original plan. If you go to Section 4, you'll see that we've now gone through the entire septic analysis in 10-meter-wide bins, from, you know, 10 meters from the water, 20, 30, 40, all the way to 700 and whatever is the maximum amount. And so, yes.
I could have gone home in two hours.
Right. All right. And on the flockulent question, it's a great, it's a great point. So for the dredging projects, we, the contractor has to submit, they have to do all their tests, you know, in the lab, they have to submit all those LD50 data tests to DEP before they can get a permit to use any of those flocks. But we would love to send you their--
That's only LD50, that's only 50% of the species got, so that's not a really good test.
All right, well, we will love to take you up on your offer for more information on the flockulence.
You said we went from 55 down to 10 meters. Good, that's right, did you see a significant difference in the results?
You gotta come to the mic because--
Yes, the statement, the statement was, did we see a difference? And yes, we did, and that's what has allowed us in this 2019 plan to be much more pinpointed in our septic-to-sewer prioritization and our septic upgrades.
Well, let me tell you how we do it in the scientific world that I'm in, and I'm not, I don't mean that in an insulting way, I mean, I'm just trying to educate. But what we would normally do is like, let's say you did that 55, and then you went down to 10 meters, you see a significant difference, right? So then you go to 5 meters, and when you don't see a difference between the two steps, you assume you're in the right number. So did you do that? They've gone to 10, have they gone smaller to make sure that 10 was adequate?
You think about the average lot size in Brevard and where the septic tank is in relation to that lot size, you're not gonna have septic systems increasingly closer to the water, or you're, we're not gonna have data from the Department of Health permits on exactly where those tanks are located in the lot. So the data that we have available for that analysis isn't really any more accurate for us to look at a finer scale.
Well, maybe even if you could go a little higher, so if you did 10 meters, maybe you look at 10 and 12, and if you could see the difference in how it skews the data, it might help them, because if they're trying to decide between A and B, when you go at 12, it's here, and 10, it's here, then you know maybe it's in the noise. But if both cases always say this is a better idea than this, then they know, you know what I mean? So I think some of that data regression would be useful. But thank you, and thank you for letting me come back up here.
Thank you for coming back up. All right, Sandra Sullivan.
Sandra Sullivan, 165 Dorset Lane, South Patrick Shores. I have to put my glasses on to see. I wanted to talk about a couple concerns I have. Unlike other areas of the Indian River Canal, we have unique issues over in South Patrick Shores. We have recently become aware that our neighborhood sits on top of an old military dump, and that this contamination, according to the EPA report, would have concentrated into the muck. Specifically, in the last 20 pages of the 1,400-page report, it indicated a high risk of DDT and lead in the muck. So I have contacted both Representative Altman's office and Congressman Posey's, Mr. Posey's office tells me they have the funding to test the muck, and it's in process. I would respectfully like to request that there is a hold on the muck testing, the muck dredging, rather, east of South Patrick Shores until we have that muck tested. I'm also now on the RAB board for Patrick Air Force Base. In the last meeting on the 5th of February, they had a meeting where they discussed the contamination in Survival Canal, they have exactly the same issue, they have lead and pesticide concentrations. They have control use in place, which means for that particular site, the muck is not allowed to be disturbed. So I would ask your consideration that this be appropriately looked at. I have a couple other issues. I'd like to, also said that Bob Bocock, Aaron Brockovich's right-hand guy, I messaged him, and he said the PFOS that's also in the muck would concentrate on the spoil island. So I spoke to DEP, DEP said that they're looking into coming up with some rules for the handling of muck and PFOS. I'd like to mention a comment, correct, about the population growing. City of Satellite Beach did a presentation recently, the population is not grown compared to 20 years ago. What changed was the closure of a plant that was supposed to be relocated to the mainland. As you know, we have a plant that's operating at near capacity, and that's what's creating a lot of issues. I would like to propose a short-term solution. There is a pipe that runs past South Patrick Shores to the old base housing, is on Cocoa Sewer. It is not, my husband's a civil engineer, it's not a big deal to tie into that and offload South Patrick Shores onto Cocoa Sewer, which has like 67% capacity and has excess capacity to handle it. So I also want to say that a guy named, a researcher named Dame, D-A-M-E, predicted in 2000 that we would have estuarine collapses in 20 years, which is now due to population growth, and I think that the management of our, I'm out of time--
Yeah, I was just gonna cut you off.
Yep.
Sorry.
Yep. Do you have any questions about--
Just real briefly, did you mean to say Cocoa Beach for the treatment plant? Because you said Cocoa, I just wanna--
Yes.
Okay.
So Cocoa Beach has 67% capacity, South Beach is at near capacity at 80% or above, and which is why when we have, we have the, we have issues with our pipes and the water seeping into the pipes, so whenever there's a rain event, we have the discharges. And, you know, it's so key, you have to address the root cause, and you have to find interim solutions to stop the sewage dumping, because, you know, otherwise you just have more muck you gotta clean up.
I'll just ask my colleagues real briefly, that that particular wastewater treatment facility does have tertiary treatment, they are up to AWT standards, and in fact, I think it's one of, if not the cleanest outputting facilities in the entire county. So we, John and several of the, several of the folks, both on my staff and volunteers, went with me to tour that facility, and it's an impressive facility. So if we are looking at adding to an existing facility, I don't have any qualms adding to that particular facility.
Could I mention one point before I go?
I guess, just make it quick.
So I was at an Indian River Lagoon meeting, and Courtney Barker asked why we're still putting septic on, septic systems in on Merritt Island, and the comment came back that it's because that plant, I don't know what plant it is, is at near capacity. This is ridiculous, you know, I just want to say--
I don't think that's accurate.
It was Virginia Barker that--
No, I'm not saying that she didn't say that--
You can ask her.
In terms of it being capacity, I've looked into that not too long ago, and I don't think that's accurate unless something changed--
You're welcome to watch the minutes that's--
No, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I'm just making the observation that I don't believe it's at capacity, that's all.
She's the one that made the comment to Courtney Barker.
I'll happily chat with her later.
She's shaking her head no. Yeah. Okay, all right, we are done with the cards. Oh, you wait, we have another item that has more cards yet, so. It's great, it's fun. All right, so we'll bring this back to the commission, any comments? I mean, I guess, Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you for everyone that participated in this. I'll just be brief. The original plan had $198 million for demucking. I think we asked the Citizens Oversight Committee to reprioritize and spend a little bit more on infrastructure. This updated plan actually saw a $27.3 million increase in mucking. Now, here's what wasn't mentioned, but is in that 226-page document. FIT, and is noted in the Tetra Tech study, that the estimated acreage of muck has decreased from 15,900 acres to just 6,700 acres. So again, we are going to be spending 14% more on mucking despite the fact that there is 42% muck to be taken up. So I appreciate the efforts of this Citizens Oversight Committee, and I think it was probably a failure on our part of not being specific enough. So I would like to come to some consensus, hopefully before we send this back to the Citizens Oversight Committee, and give them some sort of number, whether that be a 33% reduction from the initial $198 million of demucking, that still would leave a grand total of $130 million. I'm not stuck on that number, but I think we will be in this exact same predicament if we don't, we tried guidance, I don't think guidance worked very well. I think that we need to provide them with a little bit more numeric direction. So with that being said, I can't support this plan because, again, there is a tremendous amount of increase in demucking and a tremendous amount of decrease in muck.
Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, I would like to address Ms. Barker on that subject. Would you have any comment on muck kind of vanishing from the Indian River Lagoon?
A few things. So the muck acreage that was in the original 2016 plan was based on data collection under a contract for the Water Management District that was done using acoustical measurement of the reflection of signals from the bottom that estimated moisture content in the sediment. When the Florida Tech team went out and visited all of the sites that the St. John's data indicated could be muck, they found that sometimes it was muck, sometimes it was shell hash, that shell hash is, you know, big coarse material with lots of water in between the shells, and it sends a similar signal back as muck. So it was through that validation process of Florida Tech scientists going out and probing each of these areas that we were able to document a reduction in the acreage of the lagoon bottom that's covered in muck.
Thank you, because those numbers were quite stunning. So hearing that, it makes sense to me that you have a handle on that. From what I've heard tonight, I'm very much in favor of this plan. I will in fact make a motion that we approve the plan as it is, because as has already been mentioned, there's been an awful lot of science and data and input from an awful lot of people, as Bill mentioned. If you want to-- As Bill mentioned, if you want to torpedo the plan, just bring up half a dozen people that say it's stupid, and therefore it must be. And I think the plan addresses the fact that we are increasing demonstrably the amount of money that's being used for sewer improvements and conversions. So I think the plan's got a good mix, and if we want to change next year's plan, let's do it. But to slow down now would put a real crimp in what we're going to accomplish in the next 12 months. So I would suggest that we move forward with the current plan, and if we change course, let's do it for the next plan. Give them absolute numbers, as Commissioner Tobias had mentioned. And all these experts that have come up here tonight that have given us their opinions, I would suggest they give their opinions to people that can speak on their level, because I can't. I'm not a scientist. I have to go with the staff, and I trust staff. I trust the Citizens Oversight Committee. It's full of an awful lot of smart people that have invested an awful lot of time in studies and with tremendous experience in this, and I think that this would be the way to go. So I would like to make a motion to approve this plan.
Second? I have a motion by Commissioner Smith, a second by Commissioner Pritchett. Commissioner Loeb?
I just had a quick question for staff. Virginia, I'm just trying to understand, in terms of the shell hash potentially resulting in a false positive for muck, do you have any idea in terms of the relative amount that we're talking about in that? I'm just trying to gauge how far off those measurements might have been, if we're talking at exponential level, or if we're talking that there's a 5% variance, in which case it may not make a heck of a difference.
In terms of area, it was fairly significant, but what they found at the same time as the muck was covering a smaller area was that as that muck breaks down and is releasing nutrients to the water column above, that flux rate was higher, considerably higher than the previous estimate. So when they took all of the new information into account and calculated a new total estimate for release of nutrients from muck in the lagoon, it was very comparable to the original estimates.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
And I'll just comment that I don't ever -- it's obvious if anybody's ever watched any commission meetings. I personally don't ever vote based on the number of people that come and for or opposed to stuff. I've been booed, I've been cursed at, you name it. We've been -- everything but chairs thrown in this place, and it's probably because they're attached. But I have always fought for there to be that balance with infrastructure, because I don't know how I look a constituent in the eye when they say, "Why in the hell are you dumping raw sewage into the lagoon? Why are you not upgrading the pipes?" I just, I believe that we can do better, and I don't think that we should sweep the lagoon funds. I don't think that by any means, but I think that we can still do better. I think we need to increase capacity, and I think there has to be a balance. I don't think that we should put that whole burden on the utility and in turn on us, because commissions of past failed to maintain the system. That's not our fault. That's not anybody's fault in this room, probably. However, I think that there needs to be a balance, because I am not going to be answering the phone in my office and having my staff answer phones in the office, getting yelled at by constituents because we're dumping raw sewage in the lagoon, because I don't care what kind of scientist you put on that. You can't measure the impact of that. And that's just the discharges you hear about. That's the discharges that you see on the news. So I will not support this plan, because I think we can do a little bit better with -- a lot better with infrastructure. But I think that there needs to be a balance. You don't -- I'll stop talking. So I'm just not going to support it as it sits. Commissioner Pritchett? I thought the commission was done speaking. That's why I spoke. I didn't mean to speak before Commissioner Pritchett. I apologize.
Oh, no, ma'am. I got a thought when you were speaking. I would like to go ahead and get us working very hard on addressing infrastructure. I think we need to maybe work on a workshop. I was just talking to the county manager. I think we have a lagoon workshop coming up here in the next month or two. I think we need to move right into that and start working on some funds to fix that situation. So I think that's something we need to do. If we're going to start using this, though, to fix infrastructure, I want to cut the tax in half on this and quit taxing people, because we're going to be taxing them there, too. So I just, I can't do it in all consciousness. I cannot take this and put it on failing infrastructure. I think we have to fix it. I think we need to tax the people that are using those systems. It's a user-based fee, and you've got to pay for your own facilities to clean up your mess. So anyways, so I'm going to support this right now, because this got approved in 2016 to be the taxes start coming in. So 2016, we did nothing. 2017, we had to work through all the permitting. So it got a little bit towards the end going. 2018, we're kind of on a roll. We're in 2019, it's actually just year two. From what I heard when we started this plan, it was going to take almost five years to start seeing results. So my question was, are we getting any worse? And Ms. Barker told me, "No, we're not getting any worse. We're not getting any better. We're not getting any worse." So not getting any worse might be good, because we were headed in the worst direction pretty strongly. So we might be stopping the bleed some. We've got to fix this. But if you lose patience on a plan that people put together to work, when they said it's really not going to show results in five years, we pull the plug, we keep changing our mind, changing our mind, you're going to be worse than women shopping at Marshalls, you are not going to get anything accomplished. So I think on all fairness with that is if we're not getting worse, and removing muck has to be doing something. But we have to start stepping up and doing something with some kind of fee to start fixing the junk jumping into the river, which is used by the users, and they're just going to have to pay the cost. We're going to have to fix those situations, so.
And where I would agree with you that, you know, the user should pay the fee, they have been paying the fee. And half of the system that's failing is on the backs of the county that didn't pay or didn't fix the system, whether that's commission diverting, you know, messing with the enterprise fund, saying, "We don't want to fund this. We want to build this. We want to..." Whether or not they weren't charging enough, it doesn't matter. It's not up to the user to make up that money, in my opinion. And I am not suggesting even for a second that we sweep large amounts of money out of here to address the failing infrastructure. Maybe there's a balance between the two, but failing -- the I and I doesn't just come in on people's properties, and it just doesn't come in, but it is what overwhelms our system. And the more people that move here, the more building we do, because we are expanding in population.
Well, we have 50% of the Brevard County population on the county system. There's 43% that are not. So I don't think it's fair having the whole 100% pay for 57's problem when the other 43% is paying heavily into their own municipalities to fix these.
But then that would defeat your argument, because you're asking to put it back on the user. So if I give all Brevard County utility residents an increase in fees to cover the entire system.
For theirs.
Right.
City of Titusville, we've done a 15% pay increase structure over the last five or six years, and they have another 3% going on for the next six or seven years. So they are aggressively addressing this and charging more fees up there. We pay a lot up there for our water and sewer rates, and you can ask Titusville, they're all mad about it, but they're paying for it to line these pipes and to fix their problems. And I think everybody just needs to start doing this.
And that's one municipality. And I agree. I think there needs to be a balance.
We have to make the others do it.
I agree. And if we had the power to wave a magic wand and make the other municipalities do it, then we'd have power over the other counties that do have their own impact on the lagoon.
Commissioner Zanardi, I would like to ask you a question. You would like to see a better balance. What would the number be? Because they've just increased phenomenally the amount of money that is going to go into -- and could you refresh my -- I don't remember.
$114 million.
So we're spending an additional $114 million with this plan than was originally planned for sewer upgrades.
It's not just sewer upgrades. That's not an accurate number.
Ma'am, could you?
So the $114 million is for all sewage. That's wastewater treatment facility upgrades to remove additional nutrients. That's connecting septic to sewer. That's upgrading septic systems where connection sewer isn't feasible. That's addressing the sewer laterals. That's helping with the spray fields. So anything related to wastewater.
Yeah, so it's a lot more than just sewer expansion.
So how much more would you like to spend on a --
I don't have a magic number, but I'd like to see what the utility has.
I want to know the number, because we need to come up with -- we need to give them direction. We need to approve the plan or come up with something pretty quickly, because we're wasting time.
Well, I was okay with the workshop, but we're not spending the money fast enough, and that's probably a whole other discussion we could have up here, because we make four -- we collect $4 million a month, and we're definitely not spending the money quick enough.
Well, again, it takes permitting. It takes time to get permits and time to get the plan going.
And it's not just the expansion of the plant. And this is something I've argued for a very long time, and it's okay if we disagree on this. We just have to disagree on it. But that's obviously a discussion that would include our utilities department and not just a discussion for me to pull out of thin air and come up with a magic number that will satisfy me in some sort of way. Commissioner Loeb?
And this is just in addressing Commissioner Pritchett and her concerns with respect to the folks that are on the municipal systems. I don't know that anyone's expressed -- I certainly don't have any -- anything against or any dissatisfaction with the municipal systems or the municipalities that run those systems coming and seeking to get sorrel grants or sorrel funds. I don't think anything prohibits that that I'm aware of. I think that that's something that's done and probably will continue to be done. I do know that when I was out touring the Cocoa Beach plant a couple, three weeks ago, that they had indicated that they're looking to get grants that are originating at the county level. So quite frankly, I don't have a problem, because it's all the same issue, whether it's coming out of Cocoa Beach or Titusville or out of a Brevard County plant, it's still going into the same body of water. So for us to play this sort of, I don't want to call it a game, but to be close-minded to the extent that we say, "Okay, we're only going to focus on Brevard County infrastructure" when we're taxing everyone in the area over it, I would agree, that's not fair, but I'm amenable and I'm happy to have some of that money, a reasonable percentage of that money, go to the municipalities to work on their infrastructure as well. I don't think it's an all or nothing, where it's all the municipalities or all the county or none. I think we can have kind of a mix of that, where the balance falls. I couldn't tell you at this point, but I'm not opposed to spending more money, whether it be in Titusville or Cocoa Beach or, you know, any other municipality that operates their own infrastructure of that sort.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Yes, sir. And I do understand that, but here's my quandary with that, is when this got passed, it was for new projects. And I got to tell you, if it would have been on the ballot saying, "We're going to put this tax on to fix all the failing infrastructure," I don't know that I would have voted for it. But, you know, maybe if we do that, we put something else on the ballot with different language to fix maybe other types of failing infrastructure, but that's kind of not what we presented to the voters when it went through. So we're going to have to work through that, because in my heart right now, it just doesn't feel like it's the same thing. So I would have to really spend some time thinking about that to make sure that I could get my head wrapped around it, because right now, it's just not there.
And I understand where you're coming from, and I respect that. But I'll tell you, and I'm the newest one up here by a good measure. I'll tell you, when I talk with folks over the wonderful process of campaigning, I can't tell you how lovely and enjoyable that was. When I talked about the lagoon, I constantly focused on infrastructure almost as a hand-in-hand thing, because in my mind, if you're resolving two items, well, killing two birds with one stone, I don't want to kill any birds, but if I had to kill, you know, if I had to kill two birds, I'd rather do it with one stone than with two. I'd rather go about whatever is most efficacious in terms of addressing the underlying problem, whether it's technically classified as infrastructure or demucking or whatever, you know, whatever else the options may be. And I agree, if we were looking at infrastructure that didn't have a benefit to the lagoon or a profound benefit to the lagoon, I wouldn't spend a penny of this on that, even if we were lawfully entitled to do that. I think that would be totally disingenuous, and I think the voters would rightfully be infuriated by that. I would be very upset by that. But I think if we're looking at spending the money in a way that benefits the lagoon, we shouldn't shoot it down just because it also benefits infrastructure. But I respect where you're coming from, and if you had different interactions with your constituents and they voiced to you, to your satisfaction, that that's a concern for them, then, you know, by all means, I understand where you're coming from. But in my experience, having spoken with folks, overwhelmingly, I've been getting the opposite feeling from them than that.
Yeah, and I can guarantee you that, you know, speaking of this being on the ballot, if this was on the ballot and I said, if I asked a resident, you know, "I want you to support this, but I'm going to continue to dump crap in the lagoon," I guarantee you, it probably wouldn't have passed.
That's not fair.
Well, it's true. It's a found.
That's not fair. That's not fair in this state.
Okay.
Well, I want to just say one more point. You're talking about dumping crap in the lagoon. To my recollection, we had a $20 million gallon failure, 22 million gallon failure.
That was just the one time.
Right. So what other ones are we talking about?
How many were there, Virginia? Was there, like, 67 discharges or something like that of differing amounts?
There were overflows -- sorry, overflows, seven out of the last 13 years, you know, concurrent with storm events. I don't know how many specific discharges there were during.
I think when I talked to Dr. Soto, there were 67.
Okay. So how many fish kills were caused by that, those events? Zero. I'm not saying it improved the condition of the lagoon, but what I -- and I'm not saying it's not disgusting that people that live along the lagoon where those failures occurred, what was happening in the water behind them. But there were no fish kills. We're not talking about something that in and of itself is so plentiful that it's actually causing fish kills. So from my perspective, we are spending on this plan, as we are looking at it tonight. We are tackling an awful lot of what you're concerned about.
Mary?
So I don't know how much more you want and how soon we can get there, but I do know that we need to pass one of these things soon.
Okay. Commissioner Loeb?
In terms of the line of reasoning with respect to fish kills, I understand that's a concern, but the problem is, I think we need to focus, as has been done by and large, even with respect to this plan, on some apples-to-apples or as close as we can get to an apples-to-apples indicator or variable that we can look at. And if everyone's saying it's pounds of nitrogen, I'd rather stick with pounds of nitrogen. I'm not saying that fish kills don't matter. I'm not saying there is or isn't a correlation with increased nitrogen loading in the lagoon, but I don't think anyone would question that we're absolutely ramping up the ammonia and by extension, everything that breaks down into when we have these release events. I can tell you that I'm on the list, and I don't know if I signed up or someone signed me up at some point to get the DEP alerts every time there's some release, some accidental or inadvertent release. I get them all the time. Some of them are little. I mean, I think we got one that was maybe 10 or 100 or 200 gallons. It was, in relative comparison, it was nothing compared to millions upon millions of gallons, but we continuously, I've seen by the DEP alerts, get alert after alert after alert. And I'm not as concerned about 100 or 200 gallons going into the lagoon, but the frequency with which we have these small problems causes me to be concerned that there's some underlying issue with respect to the whole system that's leading to these things that may, at some point, end up being manifest by some symptom of millions of gallons coming out, as we've seen on at least one occasion. So I respect what you're saying, but I just have a hard time jumping from pounds of nitrogen to fish kills.
Okay, well, and I'm with you 100%, but again, my question is, how much more money do we need to get to that would make you happy to vote for this plan?
I don't think anybody's got that number, to be honest.
So where are we going with this, then?
So because we can't come up with an exact number, we just don't support the --
We should just fail it. That's what you're saying.
I think it needs reworking, if you're asking me.
And so to what point?
Like a workshop or something?
Commissioner Tobias said we need to give specific numbers. We can't just keep dancing around this issue.
I'm really glad that you're demanding those specific numbers, but without talking to utilities, I don't have those specific numbers. I mean, not unless you've got them in your pocket. But I mean, without our utilities director here going over the needs of this stuff where we do have, where we have capacity issues, where we do have the discharges, I don't have those magic numbers.
Well, I'm trying to fix the river, and I --
I think everybody's on the same page on there.
I agree. So how do we get there? I'm just hearing you're saying no, because it's not spending enough. How much is enough?
Okay.
You don't know. So that's my point. So you don't know how much it is.
How much is enough to fail?
So you just want to fail it because you don't know.
No, you just want me to pass it, because you don't want any modifications to the plan, and that's okay?
That's not it at all. You're not giving me any modifications that --
I've never had a commission up here willing to modify the plan before now. So if we are -- and I don't talk to these guys, so if this commission decides to move in a different direction, if they want to contribute 20 more to infrastructure, 20 million more to infrastructure, then that's where we're headed. But without talking to utilities, I didn't know these guys would even consider a modification to the plan.
I apologize, but I'm going to call the question if we can.
Yeah, let's do that.
Yeah. Okay. There's a motion on the floor to pass, and the question's been called. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion fails. Two, three.[1776.92]
Quick question. Ms. Virginia, if this doesn't move anywhere tonight, does this put a halt on all of the projects moving forward for the lagoon right now?
I'm looking to the county attorney for, so we have, we have an adopted budget for projects that were approved in the 2018 plan. So do we continue with what's in the 2018 plan until you adopt an update?
I believe so, because you have not amended the plan.
Okay, so we're going to be operating off of last year's numbers. Ms. Bentley, I think I specifically, I don't know if everybody else, I'm going to need a legal opinion from you on what these monies can go to as far as what we can make changes with, what would be legal and not legal for as far as voter intent. Thank you, ma'am.
And I believe we had this discussion when, I don't know if it was, if it was attorney Scott Knox or if it was Ms. Bentley, but we had the discussion on if they could be used toward infrastructure improvements.
Right, there was a discussion, I think, about a year ago on that. And yes, infrastructure can be a valid expenditure. I think the process is the thing that's giving you more difficulty at this time.
Right. Commissioner Tobias?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'd like to make a motion to send this, the, the plan back to the Citizens Oversight Committee. I think there's clear direction by the board that overwhelmingly, we believe too much money was spent on the priority of mucking and, and absent of any specific numbers. Requested they redirect that money more to infrastructure instead of increased mucking as they did with this plan. So that would be my motion.
Commissioner Loeb?
And again, I, I respect where you're coming from, hence the reason I voted along the same lines you did. But I don't think that's fair to those folks either. I think that maybe we need to get our ducks in a row in terms of giving them very specific direction as to an actual number. I'm happy to talk with, with our different department heads to determine what an appropriate number would be. I'm happy to fast-track that as well. But I hate to say work on it, but we're not giving you a goal as to what to work toward. So I don't know that, that at this point, that's anything other than premature. So I would ask that you consider perhaps maybe making that motion at a subsequent commission meeting, at which point, you know, I'd be happy to support you if we can plug in a particular number in specific direction for them.
I certainly would like to give them a little bit more leeway by then saying, hey, you have $130 million to spend on this and $87 million to spend on this. I think that, I think the Citizens Oversight Committee, when we made the request for the education funding to be decreased, I think they made a good faith effort to bring us back some options. And so I actually do have faith that the Citizens Oversight Committee probably heard loud and clear what we had to say up here. I think our goals are the same and I would like to give them a little bit more leeway and see what they come back with.
Well, let me, let me ask in terms of whether or not there's actually a motion needed because I don't know of anything that precludes them from doing that on their own volition anyway, rather than us sort of mandating or forcing their hand to go ahead and do that. And I just, I feel bad for them because they're not going to know whether 5% is an appropriate amount as far as the commission's concerned to go toward demucking or 40% is appropriate. And I think without some direction, it's kind of an unfair task to set them to. So I, you know, I understand where you're coming from and I respect it, but I don't know that, that I'm able to support that tonight. Although if they, they want to do work on their own volition toward that, God bless them, but I don't want to give them a task without enough direction such that we may get something down the road from them where they do make a good faith effort, but it's still not sufficient.
I would like to second Commissioner Tobias's motion. I think that everyone up here has the notion that we want them to give us some different numbers. And unless somebody can come up with a specific number that makes sense to them, I think that we should leave that to their discretion. But I have to caution everyone in this room, including the commissioners, if we don't give them a specific number, are we just, I don't want to use that phrase, doing something in the wind? Because, you know, I, I trust the staff and I'm not saying that you guys don't. But if they make a good faith effort, I will support that. You guys have an idea that you want more money spent on sewer conversion or whatever it is that you want, I have every faith that they'll do that. If you guys want to come up with some kind of a number, let's do it. But otherwise, I, I just think that it's extremely important that we move forward.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I agree with that. I almost think, guys, we're going to, we should expand this board and we should all be sitting on it, just so that we're not doing these last minute changes. Maybe we just, all five of us need to participate on this board so that we're getting the same ideas. And I think the people that have differing opinions, I think they probably need to start showing off, showing up and doing that so we're not hashing this all out at a commission meeting. I think this would have been better served at a very strong workshop. But I think all of us might need to consider, since it's as strong with our opinions, that we all show up in that kind of a forum and do that instead. And I don't know how to do all that, but I think that should be a going-for recommendation for us, like TPO.
I don't think we can based on the way the board's designed, correct?
The Indian River Lagoon Oversight Committee is set up by ordinance. So to put everyone on the board would require an ordinance amendment. And given the number of interlocal agreements that you have, that would have to be amended. It would be a very time-consuming and complicated process.
Yeah, I mean, maybe perhaps in the future, we do a workshop, you know, the commission and, or a joint workshop with the Citizens Oversight Board. Commissioner Loeb?
I'm just, I'm trying to, even if it's imperfect, I'm trying to come up with some number to give you all this guidance that might be acceptable. Again, I don't know that it will be, but I mean, would 30% be acceptable, at least as kind of a?
Is that science-based?
No, it's not science-based.
Excuse me.
But I'm, I'm trying to help you all out by giving you some direction so you don't waste your time. I mean, does anyone have any feeling? I don't, I don't know what people are looking for and I just, I feel bad giving someone a task and saying, work to lessen it, but we're not telling you how much to lessen it to. You may end up spinning your wheels for nothing to come back here to have the same situation again. And I don't think that's fair.
Commissioner Tobias, would you, would you consider 5% increase? Would that, would that work in a, in a broad sense?
Thank you. I'm more concerned about the decrease in, in the amount of money that is spent on muck instead of, because I think, I'm not saying that the, the graph was, the pie graph was misleading. Because I don't think anyone was trying to mislead anyone else.
It was.
But you had to dig pretty darn deep into that and thankfully, I have a very good staff. So the first pie chart was 302 million, the second one was 421 million. That's the first issue I have. The first one and the original plan cost, it had muck removal combined with the interstitial water treatment, whereas the second one broke those apart. So where it looks like there was less money spent on mucking or demucking, the reality is there actually was a huge increase. So again, I don't think anyone was trying to be misleading, but it was. And I, I would like to see a hard number on a decrease of the mucking amount from the original plan cost of 302.9 million dollars that initially stood at 198,100,000 dollars. So I, I think that if we saw a decrease in the mucking, considering the amount, a 42% drop, now whether it was measured one way or another, I'm, I'm just reading with what the scientists brought back to us. I would like to see more leeway given to the Citizens Oversight Committee by saying, okay, spend less on mucking, spend more on other things. I don't want to be specific and, and say which specific programs that may better be used on. I would like to see, you know, the science, science dictate that, that type of stuff.
Well, if you decreased the muck removal by 10%, that would give you, give them direction to come up with a specific number to work, to come up with other things that the money could be spent on.
But to be clear, if there was a decrease, that decrease needs to be, needs to come from the original plan, original plan cost.
Right.
It's very important that it, that it decreases from that number.
That's what I'm suggesting.
So, so listen, I had down 30%. I would be comfortable, you know, I would be comfortable with that. But again, that's, that's the discretion of the board. I'd rather leave that to the Citizens Oversight Committee, but if, I'd like to see.
Well, my concern is that you're thinking 30, I'm thinking 10. If they come up with 15 and we have three more board members that are, you know what I'm saying? So I'm just trying to give them direction.
I, I just came up, I just randomly plucked that 30%. I'm more specific on a decrease of mucking from the original plan cost.
So if we decrease the mucking by 15% and you, and use that, those funds for other?
Virginia?
I would, I would be okay with that.
I just want to remind the board that, that part of the, the change in those pie charts, why the original pie chart is 302 million and the, the 2019 proposal is 421 million, is because we, in the 2017 update, we included an inflationary factor, the CPI, on the 10 years of project costs. So the, the 302 million is all in 19, sorry, in 2016 dollars, whereas the 2019 has inflation in there. So it's, if you look at the brown wedge in those pie charts, the original plan put about two-thirds of the money towards muck dredging. And the 2019 update for the combination of muck and interstitial water is just over 50%.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Can you, can you say where, that's a very good point. And that is delineated where on the pie chart that you provided us with? That one says 302 dollars, that's 2016 dollars?
Yes.
And the other one's 421 million and that's what, 2028 dollars?
In, in each year, an inflation factor is compounded, right, as, as you would normally do with, with inflation.
Okay. And where, where is that stated on, that one is inflationary dollars and one is stagnant dollars? Does that say that anywhere on this chart that, that? So I, I take back my original statement. This part, chart is extremely misleading. I.
Okay, I apologize that it's not stated there in the, the figure caption. It is explained in the text in the document where this figure occurs, but when we pulled this figure out for your agenda packet.
Got it.
That, that text didn't go with it.
Sure. Commissioner Loeb?
Just a question for Commissioner Tobias. I'm just trying to understand where you're at in terms of the 30%. Is that a 30% reduction from where it originally was in the original plan? Are you talking about making it such that 30% of the money that's being proposed to be spent goes toward demucking? Because I'm confused at this point.
I was, sorry. I was looking for a 30% reduction from the original allocation. But again, that was only because, you know, someone was, you know, holding my feet to the fire. Again, I would much rather give the Citizens Oversight Committee. I think the direction is clear from at least three members up here and maybe more, that too much emphasis is on mucking. Far too much emphasis is on mucking. If, I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to dictate. I mean, I think if they understand the, I would not go through this for 5%. I don't, I don't think any of us would. I think they understand that we're looking for a substantial decrease.
I, I would, I would support it without a number, provided that we make it clear that if they have some ambiguity, that they're welcome to come back to us for additional guidance. Is that fair?
And again, I think, I think we're all welcome to participate in the citizens, I mean, is, would sunshine preclude us from contacting the Citizens Oversight Committee and giving our suggestions?
Well, you could, we could advertise it and you can attend. You can send comments.
So.
That may be the way to do it.
I won't be doing that because I certainly respect and I want to stay out of that. So we're seeing it at this point. I think this is our, aside from you being a member of that. But, but I think you are, you know, more than welcome to participate if that's the route that you or your office decides to take.
And maybe some of the discussion is, you know, you talk to utilities as well and you can find out where the greatest need is and maybe there's that, you know, maybe a suggestion. And again, it would ultimately be voted on by the commission, but a suggestion would be to work on one item. Okay, I'll stop talking.
Unless I'm wrong, and I don't think I am, I think there's some confusion. We have a, a board member on the Indian River Lagoon Council. We do not have a board member on the Citizens Oversight Committee.
Right, but I thought the question was, can they all attend?
Right.
No, no, yeah, I know, but I think we've had some discussion on that tonight.
I'm, I'm on the IRL NEP. That's what I was appointed to be on.
Yeah.
Okay, well, as I was saying, what we can do is maybe perhaps, you know, utility sits in on a meeting and utilities has that, you know, we have that discussion with utilities to find out where we can either improve the system or fix something that's failing that's ultimately affecting the lagoon. And maybe that there's that 50-50 option. I don't know, I'm just throwing ideas out there, but I think that there can be a compromise. I would never suggest, so I get a little sick of hearing it, that, that we sweep the money or we take a big chunk of the money and just upgrade our whole utility system. That's, that's ridiculous and silly. I just think that there needs to be a balance. We need to commit, before we start putting in more oyster bars, we got to stop dumping crap into the lagoon. I mean, it's not, you don't have to be a rocket scientist to figure out that that's a bad idea. So that's, that would be my direction. I think giving a number is difficult without having utilities here to say, we've got